At 6:30, we have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Is Pastor Weeks here? Are there any other pastor Weeks? Are there any other pastors here that would like to do the invocation? If not, please join me in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the order for which it stands, one nation, and we're not indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you read the rules for speaking on agenda items, please?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens are given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, Clerk. First order of business is approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on April 25, 2017, at 5:30, and the special city council meeting on May 1, 2017. I have a motion?
You have a motion. Second then.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections? If not, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations? We have none. Boards and commissions, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. This is the North Pervard Library District Board Semi-Annual Report and staff recommends you accept the North Pervard Library District Board Semi-Annual Report as written.
May I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
All right. And a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign. Passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public present? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the petitions and requests, not on agenda items, however? I see no one. Next item is the consent agenda. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Would you like council to pull any items or any cards on consent before I introduce?
Yes, sir. Council, do you wish to pull any? Is there anyone who wishes to pull an item?
No.
I have none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
I will take a motion then to-- oh, no. Will you read items A, B, C, and D? City Manager?
Yes, sir. For the record, consent agenda item 8A, approve the amended Titusville Student Advisory Council Scholarship Award Policy. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award of contract to GenSet Services Incorporated of Opelika, Florida, for $221,268.32 to provide a design and build services as described in the proposal received in response to request for proposal RFP 17P013 Design Build WR. GenSet emissions improvements and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the purchase of Coats CHD 9041 tire changer from Myers Tire Supply of Tampa, Florida, in the amount of $16,513.27. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Petroleum Cleanup Participation Program, Amendment Number 2, for 44660 Sisson Road site, the old city fire station number 14, now used as a facility maintenance building. Authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and approve increasing the city's cost share in the amount of $35,821 for the remediation of the site.
Since no items have been pulled off, I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion? Motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign. Passes unanimously. Ordinance's second reading, public hearing related action? We have none. Ordinance's first reading? We have none. All business. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have a presentation, Mr. De Naro and Ms. Jan Bush, for the discussion of the current city retiree benefit policy benefit consideration, including the $500 monthly cap on retiree health care.
Thank you, Scott. Mayor, council members, good evening. Joe De Naro, Human Resources Director for the city. I'd like you to welcome Jan Bush, who benefits consultant with Robinson Bush. Jan has worked with the city in linking our coverages, primarily Medicare coverages and our retirees, to coverages over the years. She's very familiar with our plan design. She's also participated in some of our meetings with retirees, so I'm going to let her take the lead. We're going to go through-- there we go. We've got a PowerPoint presentation, some information. I'll turn it over to Jan at this point.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Good to see you again.
It's a pleasure to be here. So this evening, we're going to talk about the retiree health plan and the policy relative to the subsidy. So we're going to first review what the subsidy policy is in place today. We're also going to review the Florida statute that is the requirement for you as a municipality in the state of Florida to continue offering retiree coverage at a cost no greater than what an active employee would pay for their coverage. We're also going to give a brief update on the self-funded, partially self-funded health plan, the financial status over the last couple of years, and what's projected to occur in this year and the following year. We're going to talk about what options retirees have today. And then Joe conducted a retiree town hall meeting on April the 6th. Then we'll go through a couple of the key points that happened at that particular event. Then we're going to talk about what options as a council you have to consider for the retiree policy for the subsidy going forward, and then talk about what the next steps are going forward. So this next slide is the current subsidy policy, and it's broken into four buckets, if you will, and it's based on when you were hired and when you retired. So the very top group, or these are your employees that were hired before October 1 of 2003, and they retired before April 4 of 2014. In the next column, these are the number of individuals that fall into this particular bucket. Next to that is what that benefit is. So for that first group, you've got 165 Medicare-eligible retirees and 88 non-Medicare retirees, for a total of 253. Now, those 88 non-Medicares are the ones that are really more or less going to be impacted by the policy decision that gets made today, because these are individuals that their benefit is 100% of the employee-only premium for the health plan, not to exceed the $500 cap that's under consideration tonight. The next group is a group that was hired before, 10-1 of '03, and retired before April 4, but they weren't really normal retirement age, so they were incentivized through this 75% premium benefit not to exceed $500 to take an early retirement. The next, these are the employees that were hired before, 10-1 of '03, and they retired after April 4 of 2014. Of that group, there are 109 of those. 23 are non-Medicare and 3 are Medicare-eligible today. They have a benefit of 50% of the premium or $8 per year of service, whichever is greater, again, not to exceed the $500 cap. And then this last group, these are the folks that are hired after 10-1 '03, and they retire after that period of time. So that group has a benefit of $8 per year of service, not to exceed $200 a month. So that's the policy that's in place today. This is what's reflected in your GASP and your other post-employment benefit reports, et cetera. The next page is the Florida statute, and again, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but it just, in essence, says that as a municipality, you will continue to cover retirees once they go into retirement. You can charge them the full premium, you can subsidize the premium, it's up to you. And you have two categories. You have the non-Medicare eligible, where your active plan is their plan, and that's their primary plan. And then, once they become Medicare-eligible for Medicare, the statute allows you to rate them separately, so you can handle them a little bit differently than your non-Medicare retirees. So for that group, we now have different plan options. This next slide is just a quick depiction of what's going on with your partially self-funded health plan. So we're looking at your fiscal years that ended in 2015 and 16, so those years are done, so these are actual numbers. So if you look at the 2015 plan year, your income or your premium revenue for that year was about $5.59 million, and you can see that your expenses were almost $6.6 million. So that plan year, the self-funded plan incurred a loss of a little over $2 million. And at the bottom, you can see that is the monthly contribution that the city was making towards that plan, so $364.07. The following year, the 2016 ending fiscal year, the income went up to 4.7. Your expenses stayed up in that $6.5 million range and lost $1.7 million in that particular year, and the city put some extra revenue, some extra funds into the plan to help offset that deficit. So you adjusted that loss from a $1.7 million loss to a $38,000 loss in that year. So now we get to this year that we're in today and what's projected to happen today. So we're looking at a little over, almost $5.1 million in revenue this year. Your expenses have stayed pretty high. You've had some very unfortunate catastrophic claims in these last few years, and those can really have a big impact on the plan. So you're expected to lose $1.2 million this year, and there's a budgeted, I believe, a budgeted transfer that's going to occur of $1.2 million that'll make that more or less break even for this year. The projections for next year, and again, we're looking at potentially in the budget, there'll be more discussions about this, a 15% increase to take that monthly contribution to $553, and that's where we are piercing that $500 monthly subsidy cap that's in place. But we are projected to have a loss, again, of $850,000, almost $851,000, even with the 15% increase in the premium. So there'll be further discussions and testimony and discussions about that as you talk about the budget. These are the options that your retirees have when they leave the city so far. Again, your non-Medicare eligible retirees, they stay on your active plan, the Cigna plan. So the current monthly rate for that is $482. You can see the plan design, there's a $500 deductible, and then the, you know, the plan design there. Once you age into Medicare, you become 65 or age into the Medicare, you have two different options. We have a supplement plan through Cigna, that's Plan N, with also a prescription drug plan, a comprehensive prescription drug plan. That's the plan that's similar to the plan that you have for your active employees. The other plan is Medicare Advantage Plan through Aetna. The premium on a monthly basis for that plan is $305. And again, you can see with the supplement plan, the Plan N, Medicare's primary. With the Aetna plan, you're assigning your benefits to Aetna, and then that becomes your health plan, the Aetna network, et cetera. So those are the options that are currently in place. Joe and the team had a town hall meeting, I mentioned, on April the 6th, and it was well-attended from your retirees, both Medicare and non-Medicare. The CEO of Parish Medical Center was invited to come in, and there was some discussion in several of the meetings about the clinic and how popular that is for Medicare-eligible retirees, and is there an opportunity for those retirees to use the clinic? And Parish has indicated that that's not an option for those individuals, but they did bring several geriatric physicians to be introduced to the retiree group that would be very welcoming to your retirees to utilize their health care services. And then, again, a lot of discussion on the $500 cap, and that's certainly something that the retirees are very interested in having conversation about. And here are the options that the staff has come up with in terms of looking at, option one, keep the $500 cap and charge the cost of the premium on top of that. So we have those 88 people today that would be paying $53 a month for their health insurance if you choose option one. Option two would be to keep the cap in place, but look at it each year based on your budgets and the financial conditions of the city and whether the city would want to absorb that. Now, we have 88 people at $53 a month would be about a $56,000 annual impact to the city to absorb that if you decided to do option two, or option three, which is to rescind the cap altogether and just cover the retiree premium at 100%. So tonight, and the next steps is seeking your direction on what you would like to do with the subsidy policy, following up on the health plan budget for 2018. So there'll be more conversations after tonight about that. We are waiting for renewals from Aetna and Cigna, Medicare Advantage and Medicare Supplement and the prescription drug plans for 2018. They tend to be a little bit later. Hopefully, we'll have them middle of the month, next month, so we'll be able to analyze that and see how that is going to impact the Medicare-eligible retirees, and then come back to you with recommendations on what direction we are, the staff is recommending to go with the renewals for 2018, and then continue to have that dialogue with the retirees about their options and their concerns and have those addressed as well. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Any questions from council?
This is somewhat morbid, but life expectancy is what?
Well, it's starting to go down a little bit more these days, but it's in the 70s, 74.
74?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Where did you get the number for 88 non-Medicare? Was that just provided by the staff?
Yes, from a census.
Of how many people are?
Yes. So they ran a census to look at
Okay.
the current retirees and where they are with their dates of birth and where they would fall on.
So if we have more people that are using it, they're just choosing to use what the city's providing versus Medicare? Is that correct?
Once they age into Medicare, that becomes their option to move into the--
I just thought we had a higher number. That's where I wasn't sure where the 88 was coming from.
Those are non-Medicare eligible.
Okay.
So they will be aging into Medicare, hopefully. They will eventually get to Medicare age, and Medicare will become their primary insurance, and they'll either have the Cigna or the Aetna option, but not the self-funded plan option.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I don't know if it's still--
City Manager, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
Yes, sir.
City Clerk, would you call the cards, please?
The first card is Kathy Mosley.
While Kathy's coming up, there is one other possibility we can do, if you'd like. Instead of everybody talking and often saying the same things, if you have some certain amount of people that you would like to speak, we can give them more time when they come up, so. But you can make that decision when you'd like. Kathy?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Nice to see you.
My name is Kathy Mosley. I'm a retiree from the city of Titusville, and I am not a resident of your city, but I have a Titusville address. I'm here tonight to talk to city council about rescinding the $500 cap that was placed on in 2014 on those employees. My only concern are for those employees who were hired prior to 2003 and retired prior to April 4 of 2014. Those two groups were the ones that had no indication at all that the city was going to change its policy concerning capping insurance. The city got what it needed when they offered early retirement back in the mid-'90s. They got their savings from their salary, that's why they offered it. The employees got what they thought would be a good deal for them, which was free insurance for life. The same policy was in effect all the way up until 2003, when they started making modifications to it and changing the formulaic way that they were going to calculate it. The $500 cap, I have to say, is onerous, especially for those employees who have not reached Medicare eligibility yet. General employees and blue-collar employees have no COLA with their pension, so there is no increase. And two years ago, in 2014, I think it was, or coming into 2015, I think the eligible cost was $411 for employees. It's now projected to be $551. That's in two years. So I can tell you, I retired in 2008. I looked at what the Consumer Price Indexing since that point, and it was at about 17%. So I'm already at a 17% deficit, and I have retired less than 10 years. I ask council's consideration that that cap be rescinded, especially since it was placed when--
You have not 30 seconds.
Especially since when the prior council asked what were the criteria that was used for this cap, and the personnel director at that time said there was none. So if there was no criteria to be placing it or putting it at $500, then remove the cap. If there's, you know, if you didn't have a reason for it, take it off, because it is truly impacting. We are self-regulating. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the next card, please.
Steve Bridges.
Steve Bridges, City Titusville. Well, here we are again. I'm trying to stay within the time, and hopefully I'll answer or give you some information that will preclude anybody else from coming out. I don't know how she's card she has, but we don't want to take up too much of your time, but as Kathy said, we are having it go in line.
Take all the time you need.
Well, we've been chasing this for about three years, previous council included. In fact, the previous council admitted they didn't understand the cap or its limits. We had a council meeting. I'm sure those two are here because they said, why do we have a $500 cap, and nobody could answer that question, even staff, at the time. Now, maybe they have an answer now, I don't know. Here's some questions to consider about the cap. What researcher data was used to implement any cap, much less $500? What researcher data is being used to retain it? Why only retirees? We're down 20 retirees from just over a year ago. I didn't know if you noticed that or not. One year ago, this presentation was 273. Today, it's 253, is what I heard, right? Only 88 of us, short-term, are not Medicare eligible yet. When we retired, there was no mention of a cap. Why was it attempted to be negotiated with bargaining units, which we were not in and not represented by? Why was it done behind closed doors? And I say that because we weren't apprised of it, okay? I don't think most of you know that. And I'll leave that one off for a minute. But in 2014, we were told there was no cap. That was after the April memo that we ended up seeing. It appears this cap was implemented in an arbitrary and capricious manner. Only retirees, $50 cap, and nobody can answer why. Behind closed doors with unknown intent. We have heard nothing about this policy cap that has met any merit and only puts a burden on a small group of people, 88 currently. I think it'll affect more than that ultimately, because if it's a $5 cap, even the people paying half of their insurance are going to pay half of whatever the $553 is. Is that correct? Okay. And some retirees are going to have to make further sacrifices. We have a fixed income. There is no COLA for most of us, some used to have that. And we're asking council to take some action and not just waive this cap, but temporarily, but eliminate it completely. Be glad to answer any questions you have, but--
Would you like more time?
You guys, we've talked about this several times, individually and corporately, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
I don't have a question for Mr. Bridges, but I do have one for Joe. Where did the cap come from?
Good question.
Good question. The city was
Easy now.
The city was attempting to sustain pensions and sustain benefits, medical expenses during the time that we were going through some really challenging times.
Okay.
The city was going through some very tough times and trying to meet expenses, sustain, like I said, pension as well as healthcare. We've been recovering over time with our healthcare contributions. We took the contribution from a high of $490 per member per month to about $364 per member per month. And as you saw on one of the charts, that we're slowly recovering from that time when we took the contribution down. And as we took the contribution down, we were building up some surpluses in our healthcare claim. And that allowed the city to continue to offer healthcare, but not take those funds from the general fund to contribute. So, we were able to take that cost down to that level and now we're recovering. We also had some other challenges and that was through pension reform. And we went through the changes of pension reform sustaining, trying to sustain that benefit, which occurred, you know, a few years ago, 2013, 2014. At that time, while the city was faced with these challenges of healthcare costs and pensions, the healthcare contribution was at that $364 per member per month. So, as we began to think about, you know, sustaining the benefit, continuing with the benefit, being able to sustain it, is how can maybe, you know, impose some type of a cap or develop some threshold so that those costs wouldn't continue to escalate? So, as staff, as we talked about this, we developed a cap of $500. Now, you know, that was the best estimate that we had at the time, thinking, you know, it's going to be a while before we go from $364 per member per month to 500. Well, we are there and we got there, you know, at a quite, you know, quick pace. We didn't look at, you know, actuarial studies and do, you know, this cost benefit now. We did the best that we thought we could do at the time to develop this threshold.
Okay.
And that's how we got to it.
When was that? When did the cap
2000 and, when we did the changes in pension, 2013, 2014 around, I have to go back specifically and look at what that, when that policy was implemented.
So, somewhere in 2013, 2014.
2014. It was about the same time we developed the changes to our pension plan about that 2014 and was incorporated also into the collective bargaining agreements, where it specifically stated that the healthcare premium would not exceed that $500. Yes, ma'am?
So, at that point, the healthcare costs continued to go up?
Yes, ma'am.
But on the other hand, the amount of people who are benefiting from it are going down.
Yeah, that top tier is that threshold that is frozen, if you will.
Right.
That group will never get any larger, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, it will get smaller.
Yes.
Correct?
It has, yes, ma'am.
So, from last year to this year, how many people have we lost?
It's about, my recollection's about five or six that where we have lost those members, yes, ma'am. It's actually gotten smaller.
Please, please.
Okay. So, a fair number. And I was just sort of curious because it seems like most of the people that are on this list are 57 to 64. That's your majority. And those people are going to become Medicaid, Medicare
Medicare eligible, yes, ma'am.
Eligible within the next couple of years.
That's correct.
Okay. Just trying to catch up.
Right. And one of the strategies that we had in place was to develop a plan that would offer a very comparable plan that we have now to the Medicare eligible, but not cost as much as the active plan cost at the time. That's why now we've gone to a fully insured product for Medicare eligible. So, that gap to the $500 is a lot larger than it is for the active members.
Okay. Okay, I think I got it. Thank you.
Member Diesel?
So, till 1314, there was no cap.
Prior to that, no, you're correct. Prior to, yes.
And in 1314, we came up with a $500 cap.
That's correct.
And I don't know that we're going to be able to get to the explanation, but do we know where the $500 came from mathematically and statistically?
And again, like I said, Mr. Diesel, staff, through our negotiations, if you will, our pension reform, we just developed that cap internally. Did we have any actuarial study? Did we do any research to come up with that? No, sir.
Then what I really, the biggest thing for me right now, from where I come from, is how did that cap become approved? Did you say it was union negotiated?
We used it in negotiations. It is referred to in the collective bargaining agreement. It became a policy, the city policy.
I guess what I'm really getting to is before 1314, there was no cap. 1314, there's a $500 cap. I wasn't here, I wasn't involved in the middle of that. I need to know what say they had. I need to know what approval was sought from them. I just need to know that they had a say and it wasn't just put at them and say, "Here you go, this is it, good luck."
It was a city policy that was put in place for them.
It was put in place?
Yes, sir.
At one point, you said it was negotiated.
Well, it was negotiated because with the unions, I'm not talking about the retiree group, the cap was negotiated with the unions from the standpoint that the members of the unions were going to be retirees at some point. So, you know, the unions don't represent
I get that, but right now, they're the ones who are going to be affected.
That's correct.
I need to know what kind of say they have on what affects them. All right, thank you.
Okay, next card, please, clerk.
Chris McGraw.
I retired in 2016, 31-year employee. So, I was in the deferred retirement program in April of 2014, when the change for the 50% and the $500 cap. But because I was already considered retired, I was, my choice was stay in the drop, accept the 50% in the cap, or leave the drop and get the full payment. So, my husband and I discussed it and we decided together that I should stay in the drop, so that's why I retired in 2016. So, the reality is this. In 2016, my premium was $153 a month. In 2017, it went to 233 and $80 a month increase in one year. And in the 2018 proposal, I'm a 50% plus then the 53, it will go to 303. So, in two years, that premium has risen 98%. And so, I'm here for those people in the gap that aren't quite Medicare, but have decided to retire under. And the reality of this is that a 98% increase in two years, anyone would say to themselves, "What?" If your health insurance went up, your life insurance went up, your car insurance went up, 98% in two years, you wouldn't just sit there and say, "Well, that's the breaks. Life moves on." And so, that's why I'm here to say, "I'm a real person. This has affected my budget. I have a fixed income and that just seems exorbitant and excessive." So, my request is also to lift the cap. I can, I know economic reality and I know that making a contribution is fair as a retiree. But, boy, when you put those hard dollars of the over 500, those are real hard dollars. A percentage just is a piece of the cost. And so, that would be my request of council to consider, you know, removing the cap and just leaving a percentage and then it goes as it goes. And I appreciate your time.
Any other questions? Us, yes.
I just wanted to say, I understand. I have a $250 contribution to the insurance and it is going up.
Yeah.
I don't know that the city can turn around and satisfy everybody.
No, I agree. I know it's an economic question, but, boy.
I know.
You know, from a retiree point of view, 98% in two years, is it going to be another 98% in four years? You know, we live on a confined, limited dollars and as others do.
Yeah.
And so, it's just is an impact that wasn't quite anticipated and I feel like you have the authority to try and help us out with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Mr. De Niro, can you explain how that is determined each year, the increase?
The contribution that the city would contribute towards healthcare? Well, we take a look at
Well, I'm talking about why does it go up in these periods of time?
Well, as I explained earlier, we're recovering from that low, we took our contribution from a high of $490 per member per month to $364. And that was during the tough economic times that we're having. Now, we're beginning to recover from that $364 and you show on the slide. And Chris is right, you know, we've gone from $364 to $480 to, you know, now we're slowly approaching
I don't think you're understanding my question. Is that an arbitrary amount or is it based on something that's happening to the insurance policy?
We take into account what we anticipate our losses are over the year. We have an actuary that helps us determine, you know, what those losses are, what our contributions are. And we take that into consideration and what we can afford through the budget process. That's how we get to where we are. And, you know, we've had some really tough years of losses and claims over the last year. You know, this last year, we've had, you know, three claims over, you know, 1.3 million and those are unexpected, but we had to prepare for that and sometimes you just can't budget, you know, for what you, you know, some of the catastrophic events. So, there is an organized process that we use to come arrive at the contribution.
So, it's based on what the insurance is doing?
Well, again, it's based on what we anticipate our claims are going to be. We have a, we have a process, we work with our actuary, determine what our losses were previously and what we anticipate those losses are going to be in the future. And we come up with a contribution. You know, the other part of that is, you know, is to incrementally adjust it and that's how we went through our budget over the last couple of years. Instead of taking big jumps to, of contributions, we tried to hit incrementally so we're not affecting our employees with those drastic, you know, increases of healthcare. So, there is a process that we're using to arrive at
Well, they're going up
They are.
Appreciably.
Yes, sir.
The numbers that were just given aren't small incremental amounts, so they are determined by what's happening in the real world. Is that the case or not?
So, it's your projected claims cost plus the administration of your plan. So, you look at, these are the total expenses that we believe are going to occur next year. Based on all the revenue sources, whether it's from the employees, from the city, from the retirees, this is how much money it's going to generate. Now, when you look at that, you're looking at the plan design that you have today. And the plan design that you have today is generating a certain amount of loss or expense that you need to cover with your revenue sources. So, you know, as part of the budget process, you know, I think there are some considerations about plan design. If you change your plan design, you reduce your expenses. So, that's not always popular either. What you're looking at, do we need to increase a deductible or add a copayment or change the out-of-pocket maximums or, you know, so you can reduce your expenses by looking at plan design changes, which means you're basically shifting the cost to the users of the plan. So, people that never use healthcare don't really feel it, but if you use a lot of healthcare, then you actually do feel that impact, but you don't need as much revenue to cover those expected costs. So, a lot of my clients have to do a combination of contribution changes as well as plan design changes to be able to meet their budgetary constraints that they may have. So, that's also, I think, as part of the budget process, a part of that process is looking at your plan design and how can you try to mitigate some of those costs in certain areas? And, you know, obviously, hospital costs and healthcare costs in general are continuing to go up. So, unfortunately, you kind of have that dilemma of, do you just keep putting money in the plan or do you try to mitigate those costs through plan design or both?
Thank you. Was that a number?
Please, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Just to make sure I have this clear, I understand that we are partially self-insured, correct?
Correct.
So, at what point does the insurance that we have kick in? Do you, is it, you have an illness and it costs $1,000? You have an illness that costs $5,000? At what point does that kick in?
The city purchases reinsurance
Okay.
to cover those and protect the city against those catastrophic events that you're referring to. That deductible right now is $135,000 per event. The city also sets aside another $110,000 for pooling. So, before the reinsurance kicks in or reimburses per claim, that $135,000 plus the 110 one-time pooling charge has to be satisfied. And then, any amount of claim or expense beyond that is reimbursed to the city. That's the protection that the city has in place against some catastrophic losses and we have, we have three right now and about eight that we had over the prior year that went through that deductible.
And when you speak of pooling, can you explain it a little better?
Pooling, pooling is just another way of incurring some of the losses to keep your reinsurance rates low. So, in addition to the deductible, the pooling is just a one-time event that is satisfied before the reinsurance is triggered. And this is kind of an adjustment and Jan can kind of help us out with that. It's an adjustment that you bet against your claims that are hopefully not going to go above that threshold and keep your reinsurance cost lower.
Okay, wait a minute. Jan, can you explain that, please?
Sure. So, the pooling part of it is that, so you have an individual deductible. So, if you had a claim of $130,000 and there were five other people that had claims of over $130,000, you can pull those claims dollars above the $130,000 to achieve the $110,000. So, it doesn't have to be one person, it could be multiple people, or it could be one person that pierces through that $130,000 deductible. So, if you only had one person, you would have a $240,000 deductible for that one person. You could have a bunch of people that went over 130 and whatever dollars go over the 130 will all be pulled together to achieve the $110,000 pooling deductible that Joe was talking about. And then, any individual after that that goes over the $130,000 will immediately be in reimbursable claim.
So, the money that we are actually spending is up to that $135,000 million, correct?
Hundred thousand, 130,000.
135,000.
135,000.
Okay, excuse me. 135,000.
Yes.
For everybody.
So, any individual. So, it could be you, it could be your child, it could be your spouse, any individual on the plan is protected from those catastrophic claims costs that exceed $135,000.
The city is protected. The city is protected.
I got it.
Right. The city is protected from that. So, yeah, so that is your reinsurance protection for that.
Okay, okay. I think I have it. Thank you.
Okay, next card, please, Clark.
Jim Thomas.
This is Jim Thomas, a city employee. Made both of my bosses aware that I would come up here and speak, out of respect for them, because I am a city employee. I'm also a long-term resident of Title II. I was born here, as was my wife. I should retrace that, there was no hospital then, but we were born here. That aside, I'm kind of in the same boat as Chris, but I would say even worse. And just so I don't upset anybody, I'm totally for raising this $500 cap. It was something that was promised to us a long time ago, in some cases, 20, 30 years ago. And you worked your right to the time when you could get that. In my case, if I would have left, I was 100% invested. I could have left and had the $500 cap and the lift if it happens, but I didn't get that. And what wasn't talked about, what Chris did not talk about, she talked about percentages, et cetera. There's people in that 250 cap, they're actually older than some of the retirees. They're not only older, they have more years of service, like you just heard, Chris has 31 years of service. That's a lot of service. And we are already paying above the cap because we're at 250. Not, and in my case, it's much worse, because I was one year from the drop program. I think the drop program works for the city and for the employee. All that money's gone. I didn't get that, but I continue to work with my experience here at the city. So, I'm working for that. Also, I bought seven years of service here, on top of my 20. That money was frozen by the city. They have the money in the pension program, they use it for their obligation, but the money that was on my side of the equation, it's frozen, it's dead to me. I get nothing out of that now. So, that's absurd. And I could go into that, but that's, and that's not what we're talking about, healthcare. That is a legitimate fact there.
It's not really germane to this.
I'm sorry?
I don't think it's germane to this, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'm just saying. So, if you're looking, if you're feeling concerned about what's happened to people, I'm saying it's happened to the people at the 250 cap also, and sometimes in worse fashion. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Jackson Holder. Oh, under new business.
That's the last card.
Okay. So, you're looking at a different item then, is that correct? Okay. All right, well, we've heard what everybody has to say. Is there anything else that staff would like to put on this? No? Okay. We basically have three options here. Much your pleasure. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. And if counsel, number one, thank you for the information and presentation. The others, thanks to each person that spoke on this, and I think most importantly, thanks to everybody who's been engaged in this issue year over year over year. And I'll share with some counsel, and Mary, you have been the longest and have a large frame of reference for this. So, one is frame of reference for myself. Prior to arriving at counsel, one of the things I believe to be critically important was that as the challenges that the city was facing, like all of America was facing, due to economic downturns, exacerbated in the Space Coast, by closing of this and closing of that, money went away and decisions were made to try to allow the city to be as fiscally responsible as it could. And of those decisions that were being made, I was in disagreement with some of them, although I understand why people would go to there. I didn't agree with it, and it's part of why I hope to serve on counsel. And at that point, somewhere in between pension reforms and furloughs and health benefits and so forth and so on, there were a whole lot of measures that were taken, and it's arguable to, on the backs of the employees at the time, and on the backs of those who had served previously. It is what it is, and the folks in this room have had to live with that decision, or those decisions along that way, and the cities had to live with the decisions along the way. I'm grateful that folks have continued to bring this forth to the city, to not let counsel forget that it was important as far as the commitments that were made to the folks in this room, and the commitment we have to the integrity of the city. So, I'd offer two things, or a couple of things, I guess. One is that in our continuing healthcare costs, I think one of the, one of the things that we've run into is that when you look at our expenses, at the end of the day, I see the raise in them, but if you look at '15, we're at 6.6; you look at '16, we're at 6.5; and you look at '17, projected 6.3, and '18, catastrophic year, at 6.9. What that shows me is that we're generally around six or seven. I mean, that's it. So, whereas we discussed, I think, and I just share with you, and sometimes when I hear discussion about this, you know, the takeaway is I get it's a rocket cliff up, or it's a rocket cliff up and down, and up and down, and make no mistake that a variance between a million dollars is a million dollars. I think that as a city in planning, I think it's safe to say that if we adjusted our expenses, our anticipated expenses, from four and a half to six, that if we adjusted from six to seven, probably it's about 7.4 right now, right, that we're going to meet the expenses. I'm saying from an anticipated cost, I don't think it is horribly bad to go, you know, most likely next year, we're going to pay $7 million for medical care. And I think that that's step one, because it helps us acknowledge what is a fact which has been proven year over year over year over year. That's not, if we had planned for 7 million, at least we would know the number we're dealing with, instead of trying to catch it up based off of market fluctuations and so forth and so on. I don't think we need to do that. I think that there's enough volatility in the market that we should over-prepare, put the money aside, and then, God help us, if we have money left over, we can reintroduce it back instead of going opposite. So, I would say that that is step one, and we can do that through our budget cycle and just in direction as a counsel and going, this year, guys, instead of four and a half or six, it's going to cost seven. And that's just a fact of what it's going to be. The second is relative to the $500 cap, and anytime, there are some obligations that in rescinding the cap opens up liabilities to the city, right? And so, the liability to OPEB, the liability, I mean, make no mistake that if there, in the same way that for every person in here who is paying more out of their pocket, and the same way that is a liability to you, the same reason it's a liability that was driven, that brought folks here because it hurts, right, is the same concern as a city you would have, and as a steward, you have to be cognizant of that, which makes it a hard decision. But, here's some words I found, and I think it is helpful. First off, I was fortunate enough to have dinner last night with all people with Colonel McKnight last night. And for those of you not familiar, he's a colonel who was involved in Somalia and the Black Hawk Down, and he is an American hero. And there are three charges he left after speaking. One, take care of your veterans, right? We just had a Navy SEAL die overseas, and we're eating pie. Second was taking care of your first responders. And third is take care of teachers. That was his charge. Lifetime of experience, that was it. And so, I look at the folks who are retirees in our room, a lot of them are first responders, and a lot of them dedicated their life in service, and I think that that's a common thread. And so, and I said, okay, well, that's pretty timely, that's pretty good. And then, I really tried to think about it, and hopefully, this helps with counsel. This is from Abraham Lincoln, it's paraphrased, but it says, "Neither let us be slandered from our duty by false accusations against us, nor frightened from it by menaces of destruction to the government, nor dungeons to ourselves. Let us have faith that right makes might, and in that faith, let us, to the end, dare to do our duty as we understand it." Subsequent to that, he also had another quote, and it reads, "To care for him who shall have borne the battle, and for his window, widow, and for his orphan." I think Abraham Lincoln's a smart guy, and so, when I think of what is the right thing to do, the right idea is to take care of the folks that took care of us for a really long time. And so, I think that we are dealing with something that inherently had good intent as a steward, and it may have been the decision that folks felt was right at the time, but the decision that's before us, I think we can make a right decision, which would be remove the cap definitively for the folks that retired before '14. I would remove it all the way, but for the folks by '14, they don't, they did not have an option. The deal was, they committed a long time ago, and, you know, in the last, last couple of years, you know, we say add this, and that wasn't the deal. You could argue that the folks after '14 had a chance to, you know, you can do it or you don't. I can meet you halfway, although I say, just get rid of it. I think it's our duty to take care of those folks, and that's where I'm at on it.
I'm going to jump in here for a moment, if you don't mind. Just for the record, I'm exactly in the same position that most of you are. I'm very sympathetic to what you're saying because of that. I understand your arguments and so forth. I'm a retiree, and I am of Medicare age, so that's where I'm at. While I appreciate what you said, the philosophical quotes and so forth, I'm a bit more pragmatic than that, because you don't just say, we'll make it up to $7 million, and that'll take care of it. You have to understand that the city is on, it's not like the Congress, they don't, we don't have a deficit budget, we have a zero-balance budget. In order to do something like that, we have to raise taxes. It doesn't come out of the air. It comes out of your taxes, too. So, you'll be paying for part of it, but so will the rest of the city. Now, I'm not saying that in any way but to explain that that's real money, and it also affects what we have to put into the, into the pot, so to speak, as time goes on. It's not as easy as, let's just make another number here. I have to point that out. Number Diesel, I think you're next.
Oh, point of reference, and some of you have heard it, certainly people with the staff have heard it. I just heard a very similar story to mine, and then at year '28 with the, I say BFR Public Schools, but FRS, I'm on the two-yard line, and they changed the drop program on me. Year '28. And for 28 years, and I know you get in a little bit of trouble when you say, "I was promised," but I felt like I was promised, and all the people before me were given the same promise, but they were, their promise was kept. And at year '28, mine was changed. Now, there is still a drop, but it changed my life. It was a 6.3%, now it's a 1.3%. That's clearly not the same. I jumped in a little bit early because I was scared it was going to go away. And as you may have been able to tell from my previous time, I don't like not having any say in that. I didn't like not having any say in that, and certainly in the city level, if I have any say about it, I think that the retirees should have some say. Now, when I get to one more year, because after this next school year, I will retire after 35 years. I won't get the same drop many people before me got, but I'll get something. But, it also concerns me that when you become a retiree, you lose your voice, not just sitting here, but overall. You know, they don't negotiate, the police and fire negotiate, they're not part of the negotiation. I get that, and let me make it real clear, that's not your fault. And you've got a very tough job, and I've said that over and over, but I'm still going to say how I feel about it, too, and not everybody's going to like it in all kinds of angles. I really, and again, I realize there's a financial aspect to this, obviously, that's the main thing we're talking about. Our presentation was so much more about finances than anything else, but I have some concerns about what was promised. I have some concerns about what was, at the very least, perceived for all the years that these people were working. So, I have a concern, and I tend to lean towards doing something. I don't think I've been satisfied financially with the aspect, the number seemed to show me that the number of people reliant on this may decrease. And it may, I heard a number previously that didn't match that number, but it was, I believe, 20 from last year. That should start, you know, we got to weigh that in there, too. And again, you're the expert on that, I am not. That's why you get to do the little testimony thing, and I get to talk about it. But, that being said, I have some great concerns, and perhaps some of it is because I got to live through it, and I have to separate some things up here, I realize that. But, I want to make it clear that there's a lot of people out there that were counting on us, and just like I was counting on the state. And I won't use the name, but, you know, we got governors and people like that that didn't ask us, and by golly, me and some police people, and some fire people, and other people, we lost a lot of stuff. And that being said, that concerns me. I want to make sure that the people this affects have a say, and outside of that, we got some decisions to make.
Member Nelson?
I think what bothers me about this is that these people retired, or some of these people retired, relying on no cap on their insurance, and then, retroactive, all of a sudden, they get this cap. And to me, that's not fair, because they took an act or did an act and reliance on it, and then we're turning around and saying, hey, you guys, we really didn't maintain it, we had our fingers crossed behind our backs. I mean, it's, that to me bothers me. And I have no problems with moving the cap, because the numbers of people involved are going down. So, our costs may be going up, but our people are going down, and that's the way of life. So, I'm pretty much in favor of moving the, removing the cap.
One of the issues we have is, we don't know what's happening next year or the year after, and judging by the way Congress is handling things, it could be a catastrophic situation. I know that doesn't change what you said, but this is some of the thinking that's going into whether or not to have a cap, and I feel obligated to at least let you know that. You know that Congress, the House, has passed a new health situation, saying that we're something new on the way, except the Senate has said, we passed that, but we're going to go back and do it all over again, because we don't like what you said in that, in that we were just passing it for political reasons, I guess. So, again, realize that it's a difficult time. We could, we could see something next year that's good, or we could see something next year that's terrible, so. And we, you know, we, again, have to, staff has to look at the budget in that, in that reference. I have another, I have a lot of them now. Member Stokoe?
Yep. I have a question for staff, actually. If we were to remove the cap, does this affect all of the categories of retirees? Or just the 88?
Well, if, we can go back to that chart with the four groups?
Yeah, slide three.
You want to look at that for example? So...
I think it's, yeah, slide down.
Okay. So, if you go through the far-right maximum benefit, I think that's what you're referring to, is where the maximum benefit states not to exceed.
Right.
I think that's the challenge that we're dealing with.
Well, yeah, and I guess where I'm going with this was with Member Nelson's comment, you know, if people are, if we're losing people, so our cost will be going down, is the inverse going to happen where our cost is going to be going up because we now are paying more for these other people in these other categories as they start retiring?
Well...
You see what I'm saying?
Let me try and answer. The top category, there's, and I think you all have a chart, where you see the aging of that, of those... of that, of those non-Medicare-eligible go to Medicare.
Right.
So that's one of the cost containment measures that we have in place, where the non-Medicare-eligible group in that first group is eventually going to go away. They're going to move towards aging and go into that Medicare, which is a different cost containment strategy, if you will. So that group is, you're right, it's frozen, it's not going to get any bigger, it's going to get smaller, they're going to move into Medicare as they age, and we have another strategy in place to contain those costs, but offer a retiree benefit to that group. And the same occurs with, you know, tier two as well as tier three. They're ultimately going to become Medicare eligible.
That's what I'm asking. So if we were to remove the cap, it removes the cap on all of the tiers?
Except for the one, the bottom.
Except for the bottom one?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then when you guys were determining this $500 cap, did you look at other cities to see what they were doing with their retirees at all?
That came afterwards. There are some, there are some communities that do have a $500 cap in place, there are other communities that do have certain thresholds. We were trying to model the threshold that occurs with that last group, where the city said, you know, employees hired after October of 2003 and retiring would, you know, they would receive a subsidy of $8 for each year of credit service, not to exceed $200, and we tried to model that kind of concept. So, you know, that's how we developed that 500, if you will, within our staff. I think we...
Okay. And then I had another question, this may be for Jane. Would there, is it possible to have, where retirees could have an option, where they have the $500 cap, or they could pick a different plan that would have a lower premium? Or do we have, does the city have to have one option for all retirees?
You could have another plan. You have to offer them the opportunity to continue a plan that the active employees have.
Okay.
So you could have a different plan that's capped at a lower cost basis, if you will, and make that the plan that, so the answer to your question is, yes, you could have other options, if that's what you chose to do.
Okay.
That might be something you'd want to do with your active employees as well, you know, just, I think, as you start contemplating your options going forward, that you may have a base plan and then a buy-up plan potentially for, as your strategy moving forward.
Okay. I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And to Member Diesel, to your point, as far as, you know, folks having a voice, I'm in agreement with that, you know, as employees, there's collective bargaining, but as retirees, there isn't. So to be fair to the effort that's been put into this, that these folks have been working on this and building for the past three years, at a minimum, what you see before you today. And so as they've continued to engage this issue, it hasn't been a sit idly by. And I think that there's more engagement relative with our retirees at this point than, I don't know previous, but I can tell you, I know that there is opportunity to engage, right? And it's more than just what I've seen in the past. But the flip side is, I would say that that's part of our charge, as a council member, that they are the voice of the constituency specifically, and they are unique, and therefore I think, I think that's our charge. And what you have heard, and what you have researched, and what you have found, and what you have listened to, that those discussions in being part of that process, that's why we're here, is hopefully to represent them in that process and arrive at a decision that is reflective of what individuals would hope for for our community. So I just share that with you, not to discredit what folks have been engaged in previously, but also not to discredit the charge and task that we have before us. And to Member Stokel, you know, regarding the, you know, how do you go about it? Experience has taught me this. On any issue you've got, there's about seven different ways you can cut that pie. And the one thing is, is one is this idea of a cap, and then, you know, later on, we'll talk about policies and this and that. So the next question is, well, you know, you can look at different cost containment measures, and it's going to be different policies and this and that, and the question you're going to ask is, well, can you get the same doctor? Can you get the same service? And, you know, is it going to cost the same? At the root of it, you know, if you can answer yes to all of those, and at the end of the day, it has been my experience, that take them as two separate issues at this point, because I think that we can, through a commitment, I think as a city, we can commit to what I believe was intended, no matter how we translated it, whether we promised it, whether it was inferred, whether it was not. You've got a lot of folks out here, specifically, not to discredit anybody else, but, you know, our law enforcement officers, their entire career is predicated on integrity. And so when they come and they say, you know, "This is what we believed," I got to go, "That's it." And so I just share with you, I'm not interested in really shaving plans for, you know, this or that, just to, you know, whittle it down at this moment. And I'm not interested in passing along additional for cost containment on the backs of whatever. The challenge being, I think, is that how do we holistically look at, eating, to the mayor's point, eating a million bucks and some change, that is no small task, and where you come up with it. And this is where I think that we actually are in a very unique position to take on a big nasty challenge, because we've got a city manager who is a whip. And what I mean by that is he is incredibly intelligent, he's versed in what he can do, and if he was less than who he is, I would be more reserved in how anxious I would be to say, "We can get this done." But I think that he can do it, because right now, the city is on go-go-go mode. We are growing as a community. Our tax revenue base isn't there. When you compare our median income per household, we're getting more houses, but they're just not as much. So we're seeing growth, so our taxes, our income's going to come in. But I think that we can, because of the leadership we have, find a way to balance all of the things that we're trying to do as a community, to capture this moment of growth, and still meet commitments and find a balance in there. And it is going to be a tight wire to figure out how to do it, but I believe that, as far as an option, so.
Again, I'm going to just jump in. I also agree with you that we have a great city manager, but he's not a magician. Pulling rabbits out of the hat isn't part of his job description. There's only one place this money can come from, because we have been very frugal, and we're trying to catch up now with adding more people to keep up with the growth of the city, things that are coming in, construction, jobs, and so forth. It's got to come from raising taxes, and that's the rest of the citizens who aren't being heard from tonight. And again, I have a lot of sympathy for what you're saying, but there is another side to the story, and you've got to recognize that. Member Diesel?
Yeah, and it's clear, you know, my focus here to begin with was the process. I wasn't here for the process, and I wanted to know the process, and I wanted to know what information was there. And I will say, yeah, very clearly, you guys have had meetings, and you've deciphered information, and I think it's good that they got to hear what they heard. I just feel like somewhere along the line, as Vice Mayor said, we may need to be the voice. That being said, back to the numbers, what is the concern, and obviously, I know what the concern is, but give me some numbers, give me some ideas on the rescind. If we go rescind, what's the issue there? What kind of numbers are you talking there? And have you looked at that? Well, again, we know we have less people. We have more people getting ready to age into 65 in Medicare. We know that, and I don't know that you've, you know, calculated that, I'm sure you've calculated everything. So what is the, what is your calculation? I don't want to, you know, obviously, you know, I want to support where I can support, but I'm not going to go anywhere blindly. And as Mayor said, there's a whole nother group out there that's not sitting here right now, and I want to hear a little bit from that side.
Well, okay, I'll take a stab, and Jim can jump in. We know what the cost to the city is this year by removing that cap. We gave you that, I think there's a spreadsheet you all have in your packet, that by removing that cap would cost the city $56,000, I think, is the total cost for this one year, and that's how we arrived at that number, by computing the number of non-Medicare-eligibles before they age into that Medicare. So, you know, each year, you know, there would be, you know, as the contributions go up, then we would, you know, add to that cost. We don't know what it would be next year, because we haven't determined what our contribution is yet. So we know what it would be for 2018, that's that $56,000.
So we don't know, so we don't know that it would go up necessarily? Again, we're still talking about numbers going down in the system.
Well, once we hit 553, which is what we intend that the contribution will go next year, I don't suspect we'll ever go below that. So we'll always be at that 553, because we have to pay for our claims. We have to set a contribution, you know, to pay for our claims. We know that there may be less of a liability, because that non-Medicare group will age into the Medicare group, where the plan is a little less costly than the active plan, if I'm referring to that.
Yeah. So...
Can you answer the question?
Go ahead. You have more?
Well, no, I was just going to refer to the, you know, the breakdown of the 88 people are going to be staging in, so, you know, they phase in based on the year of birth, when they're going to become eligible. Now, we don't know who's going to be on the plan, there may be other considerations for them to not be on the plan any longer, and we don't know what the contribution structure's going to be. So if we are looking at the cost basis of the plan itself, and we're reducing costs, it may not be as much, and it will be attrition. You know, there will be people that are going to be leaving the plan. Right now, we know for the 88 people, it would be about $56,000, if all 88 of those people, you know, are on the plan next year. But that's the maximum amount that there will ever be in that 100% category, and they'll be falling off six in the next year, and 11 the year after that, so we can see how many will be coming off. If you assumed it was a $600 a year subsidy, roughly, $53 a month, you could just kind of do the math, and, you know, based on however many you have that are still on that plan, you'll be subsidizing around $600 a year for each one of them, assuming that you stayed somewhere around that $53 rate. And if everything stabilizes, you know, we have had some large claim activity, and that tends to be cyclical, so the hope is that some of that will stabilize, and we don't hit that $7 million projected cost next year, but it's, you know, you have to plan for it, as you said, Vice Mayor, you really do have to plan for that, and the city's already putting in, with the 553, another 1.1 million, plus you can see there's a shortfall of 850,000. So that's a $2 million impact in next year that's going to have to be addressed, one way or another.
But our number payout seems to be, at this time, kind of stabilized, and some more numbers will go down, and we don't have to worry about next year this doubling or tripling or something like that.
It's, you hope not, but it's, actuaries have the luxury of having a job that they're wrong 100% of the time, because it's very difficult to predict on those, you know, there's a science to it, but it's very difficult when you have large claim activity that you can't predict.
How often do we readdress this process?
So there's an annual requirement.
An annual requirement. So we could sit back here next year if we rescinded, and we could look to our friends over there and say, "Boy, we just had a disaster, you're going to help us out here." Of course, you won't be as happy, but, okay, I just needed to know that, because I'm just not totally aware of that, and thank you for your answers.
City Attorney?
I had two comments. One was what you just addressed at this point, when I heard conversations of removing the cap, and there was also some talk about how things were done arbitrary, and what numbers did you have. My advice is, to council, is if you're deciding to take action of a more permanent nature, moving a cap, I think it's wise to do your studies and find out what is that impact to the city. So you go into this understanding the consequences or potential consequences of that action, and what does it mean to the city in the future, whether you obtain actuarial studies, look at trends, analysis, life expectancy, all the things that, as a council, we talked about being stewards of money, what is the impact on that action? That would be my advice. Second is, there was a question about what groups are impacted, if you remove a cap, in the various groups. I can tell you legally, you really cannot take any action that would impact bargaining unit employees without negotiation. You have retirees that are not in that bargaining unit, but some of these folks under these different caps are. So you need to be very careful, because they are subject to the negotiation process. You can ask for city manager to explore options and to provide you information, but you really can't provide direction and take and make a decision regarding bargaining unit employees. That is subject to collective bargaining.
I have a question. How would we do what you just recommended at the beginning of it? What type of motion would that be? Because it isn't one of the ones that is up there.
Right. In my opinion, if council is inclined to, say, remove a cap, one thing you could do is have a motion, are we inclined to do that? And if so, give direction to your city manager and staff to come back to you with that information, so that you could consider it to have a vote on removing a cap. You could give direction and visibility to obtain that information.
Before we remove the cap, or after we remove the cap?
It would make, before, to assist you in making your decision on removing the cap, or adjusting a cap, or suspending a cap. I'm just suggesting, rather than, I've heard conversations about arbitrary and acting without studies, I would agree. I think it's important to have studies, understand the financial impacts as stewards of the money, and understand the impact it's going to have on the city as a whole in the future when you make that decision. Whatever that decision is, I can't tell you what decision to make. My advice is, you obtain those studies and understand the financial impacts as you move forward.
Okay. Member Nelson?
I don't have a problem with what Mr. Burrman is suggesting, but they study it so that we have an idea of what the financial impact would be. However, I look at this as a question of fairness. I'm violating the microphone rule. I look at this as a question of fairness, and if these people are, some of these people have retired in reliance on not having a cap, having insurance, and then retroactively we take it away from them, to me, that's unfair. And they have no voice, you know. We come in as a city, I'm going to say "we" because we're responsible, and we say, "We decided that A, B, and C are going to happen to you, and we're up here," and I agree with Mr. Behringer, "we're up here to make sure that you guys are treated fairly." So if promises were made, and, you know, we do need to know what the financial impact is, but if promises were made, and they acted in reliance on those promises, it's almost like a contract.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that. So, and City Attorney, I appreciate the pragmatism, and I think that some of those questions that we're going to get back, as far as from a policy standpoint, I think that we have, I think that we have data to give us the inclination of how this is going to work out. And here's why I say that, because from '15 to '18, $7 million, right? Expense, $7 million. And there's $2 million that were up and down in gains and losses, and even if you put a 24% rise in healthcare costs, right? I mean, that's, it's absurd, but that's a, like, that is a reality right now, so I go, "Okay, 24%, 18%, take your pick." All right? And then you look at, how much is that going to impact our folks over here? They're going to eat more costs, that's going to happen, and every couple of years, we're going to have a couple catastrophics in there, and I think that it is cyclical. And I think that just like when we went through, and here's where I go, lesson learned, is that in the same way as a city, we contracted... is that in the same way as a city, we contracted to make sure fiscally we would survive, I think that the contraction was too much. And instead of looking at this as a twenty-five-year, "How do we handle healthcare?" We looked at it as solely in the lens of a view of one year. And I think that in a decision-making process as a counsel, I think that we have to take a, I think that we do have to take a broader look than just the single year in front of us because our employees gave us a much longer view in return. And so, I'm comfortable with the data that we have. Although I would strongly suggest, you know, just like anything else, if we're going to make a financial decision, I think the policy is that we remove it. I think that we're in the ballpark on what is it going to take. And I think that we can do it. And so, as such, here's my, at least my motion. My motion would be to remove the five-hundred-dollar cap for employees hired before ten-one-two thousand three and who retired before four-four-two thousand fourteen. That would be inclusive of the one-hundred-and-sixty-five Medicare eligible, the eighty-eight non-Medicare, and the fifteen all non-Medicare eligible from that second group. And that would be my motion.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Does anybody want to say anything? I do. I just wish we could spend more time on finding out what we are looking at because I don't think it's as simple as what others may think it is. And again, I mean, just what we've seen in the past few years on Obamacare and now this new thing, nobody knows where it's going. And it could be drastically more and could actually, I'll say, bankrupt the city. We're talking about big dollars, you know, seven million dollars. I heard you a couple of weeks ago say, like, thirty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. Seven million is a lot more than that, right? It's real money, too, and it's coming out of everybody's pocket. So, I would like to know more. But that's the motion. It's the motion.
Yes. And when I said, you know, for the rescinding, for the being fair, for the process, for where'd this come from, you know, I know you had it, we had a tough time. We got to do it. And now, we're going through a prosperous time. There should be some shift for that. But I also asked the question, "How often do we readdress this?" So, as far as bankrupting the city, that's obviously the last thing we want to do. And I think that anybody who knows me, when I can possibly say the word "private sector spending" away from "city spending," I do. When I can say, you know, "That's fluff. We, you know, that's fluff. We need stuff. We don't want to spend money on things we don't need." This one hits me pretty seriously. And this is one that I think was one way, got changed to another. And for that reason, and the fact that I understand, and then correct me if I'm wrong, we readdress this next year. And if it somehow was not working and it was a much bigger deal than we thought it was going to be, then I would say to the same people that I'm wanting to speak for tonight, that we may have to readdress it next year. But right now, I think we have the numbers. We have the safety net of saying we can readdress it next year. I'm for the rescinding and I would stand by the second.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Stokel, you're late, wasn't it?
Now, if we do rescind the cap, what would be the process for putting it back on? Worst-case scenario, if this blows up in our face and we realize, well, we're in debt for some strange reason, what would be that process? I guess I would, from staff, clarification on that.
We'd be involved at that time.
Bill?
You would have meetings as you have for the last couple of years. My understanding is we've set notices for retirees to come here and have meetings with staff to explore options. Come to you, as we did now. You would go through that process. I would just caution, you say you're removing the cap, but you're treating it as if it's an annual review. In my opinion, that's, it's different if you say, "We're suspending the cap this year. We're going to have to look at our budget next year." But you're not saying that. What I understand, you're saying, "We're getting rid of the cap." But you're treating it as if you're suspending it this year and looking at it next year. It's a little.
Well, if you're addressing me, I'd like to rebut that by saying that I asked them if we readdress this. They said, "Yes, we do."
We look at insurance every year.
Okay, okay, I get that. But if we're able to do away and rescind the cap this year, what would keep us from putting it back on next year?
In my opinion, it'd be a challenge because you've now told them you've removed the cap and you're going to hear the same thing you promised. You're going to hear the same thing every year.
You still have the floor.
I do or?
You do. Well, I guess Member Stokel still, she was the last speaker. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, no, just, I'm definitely, like, I can see it's fifty-six thousand. I feel comfortable if that's what it was going to be. It makes me a little nervous because I think we're looking at seventeen years of this, roughly, continuing on as people phase into Medicare. The health insurance, in a nutshell, what's happening with different administrations, it's, I would have never guessed we'd be at this point right now. So, it just makes me a little nervous as we're trying to be fiscally responsible with tax dollars just to say, "Hey, let's just remove it." If I feel comfortable and confident that if we were to remove it and should something happen, we could put it back on safely, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence with taxpayer dollars to say, and at the same time, taking care of our retirees that did work for us, that did risk their lives. Like, I do, there's something to be said for that, whether it was a promise, whether it was an expectation, if they felt, you know, that's what they were going to get. I just don't think that any of us thought we would be in this situation where, you know, health insurance is going up so much. But I would like to have just a little bit more oversight over it and a little bit more control, just to make sure we're not putting the city with too much liability. That's just my opinion.
You could make an amendment if you'd like to on that basis.
So, we would, if I could, then yeah, I would like to go ahead and see if we can go ahead and pay that fifty-six thousand, whatever that amount is for this year. Not necessarily setting an expectation, but if the city is in a good situation next year, then to say, "Okay, if it did go up, you know, maybe up to five-ninety and we are a good situation, let's look at that again." With the expectation that the retirees know, too, that we're trying to do the best with what money we have and be willing to work with us, knowing that that's going to happen. But, I mean, fifty-three dollars a month for the, right now, yeah, I think we could do. So, that would be my amendment. And then we just, next year, when we're back here again, you know, see what that is. And if we can take care of them, let's take care of them.
So, are you saying leave the cap or take off the cap?
I'm more inclined to the option two personally. I feel like keep the cap in place and review annually and us go ahead and pay for the difference right now, the fifty-three dollars, so they won't have to pay for that this year.
So, option two is your?
Yes.
Motion? Anybody? Second?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry, for clear, I was looking for clarity.
Excuse me. I'm in the middle of a motion.
Sorry.
Would anybody second that motion? Will anybody second that motion? I'll pass the gavel to you and I will second that motion. Who's next?
I, me.
The motion is to keep the cap in place and review annually during the budget process to determine the impact of the policy to the retiree and the city.
Discussion.
And go ahead and pay for this year for them.
Your number's up there next.
I'm up. Yes, I am. I would like to go ahead and get rid of the cap. If there is a problem, I would expect staff to come back to us and say, "We have a problem." I would expect the retirees not to be happy, but if we run into a problem, then at that point, we address it.
I'm open to that as well, knowing that we do have a policy in place to put the cap back on if needed.
Vice Mayor?
And I just want to make sure that I have clarity in the motion that's on the table. So, currently, what I hear is for the removal, the motion, as I understand it, the motion on the table is for the removal.
Motion or the amendment?
Well, both. So, the, well, the amendment to the motion that was made, the motion that was made was for the rescinding of the five-hundred-dollar cap for employees that started before, not, and ended before two thousand fourteen, with the amendment that we don't do that, that the amendment is that we do nothing and come back next year on the decision, which arbitrarily kills the motion that's on the floor. So, it's piggybacking. It essentially piggybacks nothing except let's review it again next year.
Correct.
That's what I hear.
Proceedurally where you're at, you have a motion as stated to remove the cap for the category one, which was seconded. We then have a request to amend that motion, which I believe was seconded. So, now, we need to vote on whether to amend your motion. If that fails, your motion stands. If it passes, your motion stands as amended.
And for clarity, for clarity in this voting, that if we vote no to this amendment, that it removes the amendment, leaving only the motion?
That's correct.
Is that a correct statement? Okay.
And if it passes, it stands as amended.
Correct.
So, now, we need to vote on the proposed amendment.
I'd like to hear clearly from you what your amendment was.
My amendment is for option two, to keep the cap in place, review it annually, and for the city to go ahead and pay the difference this year for them with the hope and expectation that as the city is in a good financial situation and as council sees fit, that we pick up that difference in cost with the hope, honestly, as people phase into Medicare, that this is something that we can, as a council, do. I do believe that. That's my, yeah, that's my amendment.
Thank you. Member Behringer, your number still there? Member Diesel?
Please, please, you have to come up here to talk, but right now, we're past that stage and you can't shout from the audience. It's just not part of our procedure. I'm sorry.
All right, as I understand it, and I'm hearing a lot of that now, as I understand it, as I understand it, we had a motion, a second, to do away with the cap. And then noted that we could readdress that. And you may differ with me on that, but we meet every year on this issue. I would assume we can readdress it. And if need be, I would be willing to, where I'm speaking now and then perhaps favorably next year, I would say, "Hey, guys, this is where it was. I'm being as honest as I can." I would rather go with the optimistic aspect of we can rid ourselves of the cap and things will be moving along where we can maintain the fact that we don't need the cap as opposed to going forward, saying, "We'll waive it this year, but we're going to probably," you know, we meant probably, "but we're still going to have it." And I'd just assume get rid of that for now. I want to get rid of the cap.
Call for questions, sir?
Not yet. And as to your question, I think in a perfect world, that would be a great thing. But my experience, and it's not a bad thing. I mean, it's human nature that once something is given, just like you said at the beginning, it's real hard to get it to go away. So, understanding that. Anybody else that wants to speak? Not hearing anybody. We vote on the amendment. Everybody clear? That's option two. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, same sign?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Correct. Three noes.
It's three yeses to not do that. So, the, that fails. We go back to the original motion, which was, have you will restate that?
Correct, sir. So, the emotion was, the motion was for, to rescind the cap for employees hired before ten-one-two thousand three and retiring before four-four-two thousand fourteen, both the, or all of the one-sixty-five Medicare eligible inclusive of the eighty-eight non-Medicare.
Excuse me. So, employees hired before ten-one-two thousand three, retiring before four-four-two thousand fourteen, with total employees to be two-hundred-and-fifty-three, one-sixty-five Medicare eligible, eighty-eight non-Medicare, and the employees from ten-one-two thousand three retiring, not normal retirement age before four-four-two thousand fourteen, which is inclusive of fifteen all non-Medicare eligible.
Okay. I hope everybody gets that. That's a lot of words. All those in favor of that, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? I have to say, my conscience here is that I do not think this is a good idea. So, I say yes to this motion, against this motion. So, it's four-one, I believe, right?
Yes.
Four-one. The motion passes. Okay. Would anybody like to take a break at this point? Let's do that. We'll come back at eight-twenty-five.
What's up, Mr.?
Yes, sir. We have our finance director and assistant city manager that will present our proposed budget amendments for fiscal year ending March 31. This is our mid-year review. And with that, please take it over.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council. Tom Babate, city manager, along with our fantastic finance director, Bridget Clements. And we have good news for this mid-year budget review. And if I could have the, as you know, the vision and the mission have pretty much remained stable for the past 15 years. And the reason why we need to report to you is because by city ordinance, the city manager shall furnish an in-depth analysis of the budget and financial condition of the city at the midpoint of each fiscal year. And by city policy, finance department reviews the fund level revenue and department level expenditure trends to September 30, 2017. The operating departments then analyze the line item budgetary appropriations and are responsible for managing to the bottom line. So as of March 31, at mid-year, most revenues are on track to meet the annual budgeted estimates. And the state revenues and the general fund are tracking lower than planned, and are addressed in proposed mid-year budget adjustments, which Bridget will go through. Again, for the six months where we are currently at mid-year, and 50% of the budget has lapsed, and they are, all departments are managing to the bottom line. There are two exceptions to the funds trending above the benchmark. The first is the loss fund. And the loss fund is used to pay general liability and workers' comp and various other liabilities of the city. And because of a timing issue with claims, money coming in from insurance companies, we're trending below the benchmark. And also, as you'll hear in a few minutes, the self-insured healthcare fund continues to be a challenge, and we've seen significant increases in prescription and claims costs, and we'll be making a significant budget adjustment to bring that fund back into balance. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bridget to go over some in detail, some of the adjustments that's going to be proposed.
The first three slides we're going to show is an attempt to bring the current year's budget into alignment with the results of last fiscal year. When we prepare the annual budget, we estimate what we're going to have as a carryforward from fiscal year 16 into fiscal year 17. Now that we have closed fiscal year 16, we are adjusting the budget to make those actual, to meet those actual results. So the middle column shows the change in the budget we are proposing, and the last column shows what the balance in those accounts will be after the proposed budget adjustment. The very first number is general fund. We are, at the end of fiscal year 2016, we had about $665,000 more in available funds than we anticipated in the budget. And we are proposing to increase the carryforward in this year's budget by that amount, and we will be utilizing that to fund some of the budget requests in the subsequent slides. The other funds that are on this slide, these are restricted funds, and these are the same type of adjustments. I'm not going to go into those as much. These are the same cap for adjustments. These are also restricted funds. General construction fund is where we fund a lot of the city infrastructure improvements, and then we have the water department. And I know that their numbers look big, but those numbers are purposefully there. As we go through the budgeting process, you'll see that we build in reserves so that we can maintain the utility over time. If we don't do that, if something breaks, we can't afford it. So that's why those numbers are large, but there's a plan for them. And then the last slide, these are our internal service funds. These are the funds that we utilize to fund things within the city. Fleet maintains the city's vehicles. The insurance funds all provide the healthcare benefits, and the liability insurance is within the city, to the city department. So these are, again, the adjustments that we are proposing in these funds, to bring them up to what actually happened at the end of last fiscal year. This next set of slides begins the mid-year budget requests. And so the first, we're going to start out with revenues, because we need to show you all that we have the money before we ask you to spend the money. So these are the general fund revenues that we are requesting to adjust this year. The very first line item shows a reduction in state revenues of $461,000. When we did our budget this year, we based our estimates based on the last set of projections from the state. As we have gone halfway through the fiscal year, our actual revenues are trending less. And so in order to make sure that we're going to meet budget and we can fund all of our commitments, we were proposing to adjust that downward to match trends, and utilize some of the prior year pickup to offset that difference, just so that we know that we won't be cut short at the end of the year. The next couple of items are revenues that have come in in excess of budget, and we're using these extra revenues to help fund some of the requests on the following slides. And then additionally, the $341,000 is to help purchase six police vehicles. Our fleet got behind a little bit during the bad times, so we're trying to play a little catch-up. And then the next slide, the next $7,000 is a request for customer service that you'll see on the next slide, and that gets funded through transfers from some of the other funds. So in total, it's $880,000 in revenues that we will be using to fund the following items. The first one is six vehicles for the police department, to play catch-up. The second is the principal and interest payments on those vehicles. Then I guess the next, the biggest, the next largest number, I believe, would be the general fund portion of healthcare costs. That's $360,000. You've heard a lot of discussion tonight about healthcare with regard to retirees, but it's really not just retirees, it's the whole healthcare fund, and it affects the active Our claims are trending significantly higher again this year, so the city will need to add about $1.2 million to the healthcare fund in order to hopefully meet claims by the end of the year. This $360,000 is the general fund's portion of that budget adjustment that we're proposing. In addition to that, we do have a couple of positions that we will be looking to make adjustments to. One of them is to reinstate a fire marshal position that was cut years ago, and the other one is an upgrade due to some restructuring within the police department. Lastly, I did want to mention that there, the fireboat, there's a request to upgrade the, a pump-out boat, a boat that we're currently using, to make it ready as a more of a first responder-type vehicle. And that's needed, I believe, because the increase in water rescues has increased over the last few years. And then the last one I would like to talk about is general employees pensions. The city's having to add a little bit of money to the general employee pension fund as a result of the latest actuarial evaluation we've gotten, so you'll see that throughout the presentation as well. These next two slides, this is just these two funds, portions of the healthcare costs and the pension costs. It's prorated throughout the city. This next slide is the water department. Again, they have prorated portions of healthcare costs and pension costs, and they've got a couple of other items that they are requesting budget adjustments for. We've been placing a lot of utility lien, so our recording fees have gone up, power rates have increased after we published the budget, and there's some overtime and some other project costs that they're needing to get additional, receive additional funding Again, these slides also reflect the general employees pension costs, as well as the funds' portion of the healthcare costs. And if you look in the middle section, the partially self-insured, that's where we're adding the $1.2 million to cover the increase in medical claims this year. Half of it is coming from reinsurance reimbursements, and the other half is coming from the individual funds throughout the city, and you've already seen a lot of those allocated in previous With regard to IT, they've got the same costs in terms of healthcare and pension, but we are also adding an additional $99,000 to pay for our Microsoft licensing fee. That was a timing issue of when the bill got paid. We had two this year because of the timing. And then they're requesting a backup system to our enterprise-wide software. And last but not least, the loss fund. This is where we record our liability insurance. We've had some claims come in above budget, and we've had some settlement reimbursements come in to reimburse those claims, so we are seeking to increase the budget and increase the revenues to offset those costs. And this final slide has to do with changes in our full-time equivalent positions that were approved in the budget, but we're making changes to them. These are budget neutral for the current fiscal year, because these departments were able to absorb costs in their bottom-line fund for this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, you'll see the full cost of these positions. So we have got a new FTE in neighborhood services, funded through general fund and the CDBG grant. In development services, we're combining two part-time positions into one position, so it's two kind of already budgeted positions become one new FTE. And in electronic services, there's no FTE change, but they're doing a reorganization we wanted to notify you all about. And that's it for the budget adjustment part. Does anyone have questions?
Any questions from council? I see none.
We're still, we have some more of the presentation, not just some of the adjustments. We have more good news.
More good news.
As you know, we're in the middle of an economic resurgence, and the building department just wanted to inform council that both revenues and the activity is picking up. About a year and a half ago, in response to About a year and a half ago, in response to some requests to look at some city functions that were ripe for outsourcing, we did outsource the marina. And I can tell you that it's been really a shining star. It's been a fantastic turnaround for the marina. As you can see, the revenues are up over 21%. Expenses are down 12%. And if you've ever been to the marina lately, I think it's a combination of both a better economy, as well as fantastic customer service. The occupancy is at 94%, and they've added 15 long-term customers. As a matter of fact, during the winter, the first time in recent memory, we actually had a waiting list. So the marina is doing fantastic. And some of the upgrades, reasons why the marina is doing so well, they've converted the manager's office into a lounge, they've remodeled the bathhouse, and they're also upgrading the ship store and putting in a new inventory line. And for next year, they plan on replacing the flooring, and they've constructed a new awning, and we're going to be putting in wave-finding signs and just overall upgrading the curb appeal. So the marina is doing fantastic. And as a matter of fact, I believe for FY '18, for the first time in 15 years, they will be in the black. They will actually turn a profit next year. 15 years ago, they were losing $350,000 a year, so kudos to the marina staff.
Before Tom goes to the next slide, I'd just like to share with council also that we have other cities coming to visit our marina now. They understand the turnaround that we've done over the past two years, and they want to know how we did it. They're actually taking tours of our marina and talking to the marina crew there. So that's also a win for us. It's great to share a success story with other peer cities.
And I want to give kudos where they ultimately should be, and that was with you, city manager, who made the decision to, or offered us the decision, I guess you could say, to hire someone to run that marina. It's been fabulous since you did that, and it was a great suggestion.
Sir, we've got a great team.
So, I got cut off. Mid-year conclusions. The revenues, with the exception of those noted, are on track. Departments are managing to the bottom line. We're always looking for areas to improve our customer service through organizational realignments. And of course, on numerous occasions, we've come back to council to inform you of our lean process improvement efforts. And if council approves the budget amendments, we will remain balanced going into the remainder of FY '17. So transitioning to what's next, the budget process is in full swing for fiscal year 2018, and the objective is to build a balanced budget that addresses the city's fiscal year 2018 strategic plan and funds our operating needs. As you recall, back in January, we had a strategic planning session with the community, and that was followed on March 1st with a council and executive leadership team strategic planning workshop. And at that time, council affirmed the existing four goals: quality of life, economic development, financial stability, and the efficient and effective services. Council then went on to identify eight objectives by majority vote that they wanted, provided staff counsel, provided staff with guidance in formulating the 2018 budget. So what we're looking for from council is affirmation that these are your goals and objectives, and which we will turn into a proposed budget come July. And these are some of the management priorities. At the beginning of the budget bill process, the city manager directs the executive leadership team to use these budget priorities as overarching guidance in developing their departmental budgets. And I won't go through them all, but basically, it's investing in employees, staffing, continuing process improvement, and also come in with your operating budget at no more than a 3% increase. Now, starting tomorrow, actually, we're going to be doing department reviews, and I'm sure the departments will come in at greater than 3%, but our job is to ensure that we develop a budget with no more than a 3% increase. Again, some further management priorities that the city manager has transmitted to staff. Again, we are a very risk-averse and debt-averse city, and we try to use long-term recurring revenues instead of relying on one-time sources for funding, so that we have some consistency in our budget from year to year. So what's next? On July 11th, the city manager's proposed budget will be submitted to council. Between July 11th and August 16th, we will set a tentative mileage rate. Council will set a tentative mileage rate. Then on August 16th is the first budget workshop, where we'll get citizen input into the budget process, and followed by two workshops, or two public hearings on the 6th and the 14th. And the goal is, on September 14th, to have the 2018 budget public hearing. So as we transition from mid-year today, starting tomorrow, we're in earnest, we'll be developing next year's budget for you. And that concludes this presentation.
Any questions by council? Don't see any. Do we have cards on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. You're looking at me for some reason. I don't know what it is. All right, we need a motion on this item to accept the...
I move to accept the fiscal year 2017 mid-year financial review.
And approve...
The budget amendments.
And approve the proposed budget amendments for the fiscal year, year's quarter ending March 31st, 2017, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You don't have to say it again, that's all right. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Same sign. Passes unanimously. Next is advisability relating to backyard chickens. Mr. City Manager.
At the 11 April and the 25 April 2017 meetings of the city council, several residents requested the city council consider allowing backyard chickens in all residential districts. The city council previously denied ordinance number 17, 2013, creating a backyard chicken pilot program in our residential R1A, R1B, RHP, RR, and RE zoning districts. The staff has interviewed several jurisdictions, and there's a summary of each one of those cities that are within Brevard County in your packet, as well as the 2013 backyard chicken proposal. And we have staff available to answer any of your questions. I think you have an introduction as well.
I do, thank you. We're fortunate tonight to have a representative from University of Florida IFAS. This is Joe. And Joe has, can introduce himself and tell you his background and experience, but he's here and can provide you the pros and cons of backyard chickens. I think Joe has a number of chickens himself.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Peggy. I've been here in Brevard County for 20 years now as an extension agent. I don't actually live in Brevard County. I live across the river in Christmas, and so I can have chickens over there. And we've got, my wife and my youngest child have about 700 or 800 of them, so we've got a little bit of knowledge of what can happen in backyard chicken flocks. Besides that, I have a master's degree from University of Florida in poultry science. I think I'm the last one in the state in extension that has that degree. I'm not here tonight to promote anything. I'm here tonight strictly to answer questions that you might have on the process, on the, not the process, but the process of having chickens in your backyard. I am not an advocate, will not be an advocate, and when staff ask me if I thought it was a good idea, I said, "I refuse to answer that." And because I strictly am here as a resource, and I want you all to know that. So I'm here for questions.
Okay. Any questions?
I have loads.
Go right ahead.
I have loads of questions. Okay. Joe, in terms of the safety of having chickens in a backyard, what do you think?
There are a whole lot safer having chickens than you are with a parrot...
Okay.
Or a lizard, or a snake. And I'm assuming that your ordinance is only for females, that you're not having any roosters. So the chances of somebody getting hurt by that animal is a whole lot less than most of what we consider traditional pets.
Okay.
Now, can they cause disease? Can they carry disease? Absolutely. But your reptiles are carry a whole lot more.
Okay.
So teaching your children to wash their hands when they're finished playing with any pet, including chickens, is very, very important. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I have more questions than I have answers.
I have all night.
Oh, good. We promised not to take all night. Do you guys have a course, like a two-hour course, teaching people to handle chickens?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, I gave my last one last Wednesday or Thursday night in Osceola County.
Okay.
So I've given them an orange Osceola, Brevard. So I give a lot of those kinds of classes.
Joe, how long's the class?
Four hours.
Four hours?
Now, I can, I cut the one down last week to two hours, but when I originally gave it, it was about a four-hour class. You can also access a webinar that I have on our website that I did, my wife and I did about, I don't know, three, four years ago. It's a little slow to start with, because it's never been edited, but it's exactly what it was. And we went through the basic information that somebody that wants to do backyard chickens would have, and need to know.
I know how much room I need for a horse. How much room do I need for a chicken?
Much, much, much less.
Okay.
In horses, we talk about acres. In chickens, we talk about square feet. A chicken, I have a whole set of requirements, minimum requirements. The minimum requirements for your chicken is two square feet per bird. That's pretty small.
That's small.
It's real small. That's minimum requirements. And of course, it'll depend on what breed of bird that you have. Those big Jersey Giants take a lot of, take more than the two square feet, or your little Bantam Old English or something, you probably put those in about a square foot and have plenty of room left over.
Okay. So if we were to say three to four square feet, we'd be...
I think three to four square feet would be fine. And when I give these classes, I emphasize that. You know, it depends what you, what kind of birds you have. Even with horses, you know, if you have a big English jumper, it's going to take a little bit more than if you have a little Shetland pony.
Yep.
Same difference.
Yep.
You've got to be common sense. I know my daddy used to say, "There's no such thing as common sense," but you have to figure out what you have and figure, and work from that.
There is, it's just not common, is what they...
It may not be as common as what we'd like it to be.
Didn't Dad used to tell me, "Use my common sense."
If you had common sense, you may not have the horses, you know. You know, you have airplanes that are holes in the air that you pour money into. You have boats that are holes in the water you spend money on. And then you have horses that are animals that have four legs that are looking for a place to get hurt.
I thought they were looking for a place to eat.
I have a son who's a large animal vet, so...
Every time I look at those horses, they just want to eat.
They do like to eat, in large quantities.
Yeah.
Like having teenagers.
Okay. Those are the questions I thought of. Anybody?
Thanks. How much land you got, Joe?
Say again?
How much land do you have?
You know, there's two things you never ask a cattlemen, and I'm really a cattlemen. And you don't ask them how many cows they have, or how many acres they have. But that being said...
Well, there is an extension.
We have, we have more than a section of ground.
More than a section?
Yes, sir.
Wow. That's a lot.
And at one time, I leased another thousand or so acres. So I've been in, I have been in agriculture all my life. This is not something new to me.
Raising chickens in a residential area, do they attract vermin?
I think that one of the things that I always stress to, in the classes, is that you need to have a rodent control program from day one.
So the answer is yes.
The answer is yes. No more than if you feed your cat or your dog outside on a regular basis and leave feed there. That's the problem. They don't attract them from anything other than the ability to get to the feed.
You'd probably do it if my granddaughter ate out there, but she's not eating out there, and neither the cats and dogs.
Well, I understand, but what I'm saying is, is anytime you put any food source outside, yes, rodents can be a problem.
They would be outside, though, where the cat and dog probably wouldn't.
Well, maybe where you live. If you live in Christmas, your dogs and cats are outside.
We'll leave it alone. In my neighborhood, I don't know many people who feed their dogs or cats outside, but who knows? Do they attract predators?
I don't know that they attract predators. Predators can be a problem anytime you have any animals outside. You know, small animals take a little, large animal for a predator, and so on and so forth. I think it's important, and we stress this in the classes, is that whatever facilities you're going to build for these birds needs to be predator-proof. And we show them how to do that and still make it look...
And that would be because they attract predators.
No, because predators like to eat.
That's correct.
And you can put, you can put any kind of animal outside, and sooner or later, you will have a predator that will come visit you.
I had horses, too. I never saw any predators going after them.
We have a little thing called Panthers, and whether the game and fish department want to admit it or not, they are in this area.
I think we're getting far afield. I'm not sure you're being neutral at this point.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be prejudicial at all on the subject, but the point is, is that any animal will attract another animal as a predator.
I understand, Joe, but I had horses for 22 years, and I never saw a panther coming after them in this area. And I don't think in a residential area...
It probably wouldn't be a panther in a residential area. I'll give you that, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. I think everybody knows that I don't think this is a good idea at all, for a lot of reasons, and I'll go into them at a different time. Let me let everybody else have a chance at it. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I just had, for a frame of reference on coop sizes and things like this, so as I look through the ordinances from other cities, most limit to about four, four chickens or whatnot. And I'm seeing it seems consistent to be like a four-foot-by-four-foot coop size, and then up to square 10, 12 square feet. So I guess what I'm looking for is, if, there's going to be a balance in here, because if it's X amount of birds, that's one thing. But the second part is going to be coop side versus building permits. And that is a question I have. As, for instance, I think it's pretty logical to go, "Listen, I don't want to go build a real big thing that I don't need. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense." On the other hand, I know that some folks like to go above and beyond sometimes, and they'll put their chickens in, and we're going to have a structure or something like that. And that happens naturally with sheds. I mean, that's a good example. So what is, what is a baseline for, if you have four, what about size of a pen do you need for that to take care of them?
As previously stated, a minimum of two square feet per bird.
Right, so you're the eight...
That's minimum.
Right.
So if you have a coop that's four-foot by four-foot, that's 16 square feet.
Right.
All right?
Okay.
That's four square feet per bird. That's four square feet per bird, falls within the, the minimum requirements.
And, and, oh, thank you, sir. And I appreciate that. And Peggy, for, from building, from building codes or building structures, I know that this is something that's different. At a four-by-four cage, because I, I do think, I think folks, people have pairs outside, and they got, you know, big wire cages, you can buy them at Petco or whatever, buy them online. Where do we fall, is this going to be something that we're going to, now turn this into a building permit thing, or, you know, where are we at?
A building permit is required for anything over 120 square feet.
Okay. All right.
Member Stokel.
Okay, I have another question. If we were to do the maximum of four hens, chickens, is there any type of, like, pecking order? Are, do they normally get along well? Can you speak to that aspect of it, I guess? Since there won't be a rooster there, to that, we'll kind of keep them?
They don't need a rooster.
Okay.
They don't need a rooster to lay eggs either, folks. Some people have that misconception. Is there a pecking order? Absolutely. They are herd animals, or flock animals, whichever, may want to use the correct term. And with that, they do have a pecking order, and you'll find that as you remove one or add one to the, to the group, that they will, they will reestablish that pecking order, usually within the first 30 to minutes to an hour. So, that is, that is a concern when you do introduce a new bird. You certainly don't, you don't want to take a bunch of birds that maybe say that they're a year old and put some six-week-old chicken with them. That's not going to work.
And that stuff that you would go over potentially if there was a class offered?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
Okay, I'm going to take that back.
You're going to take that one back?
I'm taking it back.
All right, you're going to take it back. Member Diesel?
Tell me about noise from chickens.
You've eliminated the roosters, you've pretty much eliminated your noise.
Oh, okay.
Have you ever heard a cockatiel?
I have.
Have you ever heard a parrot? Chickens don't make that kind of noise. What they will do is you will hear a little bit of cackling, when, usually it's when they lay an egg, or, excuse me, if, if something comes to the pen and tries to attack the pen or something, then you may hear a little bit of noise from there. But from four chickens, it's not going to be audible.
Okay. What about smell, anything like that?
All has to do with husbandry, keeping the pens clean. I don't know, I have not read your ordinance or your proposed ordinance.
I don't know yet.
But it, most ordinances will say something, but they have to keep the pens clean, they have, the pens have to be dry, which means you have to have some type of roof over them. If you maintain the pen in a dry condition and not a large buildup of fecal material, you don't have any problem. Wet, if they're in a wet area, that can be a problem. You know, where the fecal material can get wet, and then it can cause, it can cause an odor, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and I just follow-up question from Ms. Busaka, or City Mayor, or whoever. Does Brevard County man, would Brevard County Animal Control, would they already have the ability for enforcement within city limits relative to whatever ordinance is or control that they have on animal control? Meaning, is it applicable within the city limits? So, for instance, I think it would mimic like a dog. Dog goes nuts, animal control comes out and get a citation. Is that the same authority that they have currently?
Animal Control does have the right to come into the city, and they, we have a contract with them to do animal control. And our code talks about animals being at large, animals causing noise, nuisance, that kind of thing, and so they would have the right to deal with that.
And would their findings based off their visit be reflective of Brevard County Animal Control standards, or would it be what the city of Titusville has written to code?
It would be our code applied in the city, not county code.
Okay.
If I could just add that there's issues with animal cruelty and that kind of thing, I'm sure that they have standards where they determine what that is. Our code says, "Thou shalt not."
Right. Okay.
Member Stokel?
Could you just touch on the, the disease aspect of it? I'm just looking through here on, on the packet. It says, "Many local governments require extermination of poultry in the interest of public health." What kind of diseases, or how do they get them? What is that?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to address that. And I am on the State Agriculture Response Team that takes that responsibility on if we have a outbreak. The diseases that they're referring to there are diseases that would spread to other birds, not to humans. And to give you an example, we use, we use chickens in the Brevard County Mosquito Control District, and we have them spread out throughout the county. And the reason for that is the encephalitises that become, the mosquitoes become infected with, when mosquito will then go to, to a chicken and bite the chicken, if you will. That chicken will, will develop antibiotics for the disease, but they don't get the disease. There's, there's almost no diseases that are transmittable from the chicken to a human, with the exception of ones that mosquitoes will carry and then, and use the bird as intermediate host, which are some of your encephalitises. But it, of course, it's only in those viruses that use the bird as intermediate host, and they use any bird at that point. It does not, things like dengue fever and chikungunya and the hydrocephalo, or microcephloids problems that we've had, this, this zika and all, do not have a bird as intermediate host.
And then, just to follow up, then, how would a human potentially get it from a chicken, through a bite?
Through a mosquito.
I mean, through, then, what would the chicken, I guess, have to do to the human for the human to...
The chicken wouldn't do anything to the human. It's only to mosquitoes. A mosquito can burn, can, can tran, there are certain diseases that use the mosquito as an intermediate host. The mosquito then would, would, would transfer the disease to, to a bird, and then another mosquito would might bite that bird or take blood, a blood sample from that bird, a blood meal from the bird, and then bite a human, and then it's worth it to be transmitted.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
So, how often would that happen, or how often has it happened?
I'm never going to get used to that.
How often does that happen? We had a few cases of, of encephalitis west now in particular in humans in Brevard County over the last several years. But it's very few, I mean, like, two or three cases a year perhaps. And, and we don't know that, that they actually got them from the chickens at all, it's just from any wild bird.
Okay.
And we have lots of wild birds. Primarily, those diseases are transmitted by, by wild waterfall. That's how they get here.
Okay. So, you're assuming that, that the diseases were transferred from waterfall?
Well, I, I can't tell you they were or they weren't. I'm just saying that that's normally how the, how those diseases even get here to start with.
Okay.
Is they come down, because we're on the flyway, they come down with the birds when they come from the North Pole.
Are there any steps that chicken owners should take to make sure that their birds stay safe and we have no transfer of disease?
Well, as far as the encephalitises go, it's typical of what you would need to do on any, protecting yourself from mosquitoes.
Okay.
You know, if you get, in the summertime in particular during mosquito season here, you know, if you're going to go out at night in particular, you cover up. You wear a mosquito repellent. We have a whole lot more, we have more cases of other diseases that are caused by what we call tree hole mosquitoes, that do not use a bird as an intermediate host.
Okay.
And those are the ones that we have to really worry about.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Whoop. Go ahead.
Ms. Busaka, who would be the code enforcement or chicken enforcement structure? Who would that be?
Well, if it related to the animal itself, it would be Animal Services. If it related to a nuisance, perhaps code enforcement would go out there. If it related to something, perhaps they had, excuse me, 125-foot structure without a building permit, that would be a typical code enforcement issue.
Okay. You know, and my concern is, and I said this a couple of meetings ago, and, you know, they don't scare me, so we're okay. They're not big, mean dogs, but I'll go home tonight, and I guarantee you, there'll be three or four chickens running around a corner I go by. And I have no doubt that our people here who are chicken enthusiasts and care enough to sit through a long meeting will do a great job with their chickens. I have no doubt. I'm concerned about the people that aren't hearing this meeting, don't know about this meeting, don't care about this meeting, they're going to do what they do. And like I said, there'll be three or four chickens out on the road in Imperial States, which is a community, when I go home. So, I know that there's chicken violations now, and, you know, I don't think it'll be any worse with, I hope it will be no worse with the ordinance, because I think the people who, I don't think a bunch of people are going to go get out and get chickens just because we have a new ordinance. I think the people who care to have chickens will have chickens, and I think they will take care of them properly.
Joe Lynn?
Oh, Peggy.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Microphone. Oh, it's me. Just forgot the microphone again. Peggy, part of the code, or I guess I should address this to Richard, part of the, one of the codes had a provision in it that required like a $25 permit fee and an inspection of the coop prior to getting your chickens. And I have to say, I really like that, because then we know that we have a coop that is going to be effective against predators, is going to keep the birds safe, and I'm assuming we could do something like that.
Sure, we can do cost recovery fees associated with a permit when, when there's conditions we need to inspect, things of that nature, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Well, I wish I had the same faith in everybody that you have, Dan. I have seen people with chickens who don't take care of them, and it can get to be a mess. And I agree with Dan, the people out here aren't the ones that are going to have a problem. It's, it's other people who take them as a, as a pet, and think it'll be great for their kids and so forth, and then they find out they got to work. They got to clean it up, they got to feed them, they got to keep the pen in order and not annoy their neighbors in any way. And not everybody's going to do that, so we're going to get involved with, with code enforcement, and it's just got to happen. And I don't see a purpose for that in, in a subdivision. Now, if you want to live in a rural area or with a bigger piece of land, that's probably okay. At least you're not going to have two neighbors right close to you who maybe don't like your chickens as much, and then we get into, in the middle of it. And it's, again, it's just human nature that will happen. And somebody is talking about, well, their neighbors are going to, said it's okay. Well, maybe so. Maybe that's people you know and so forth. But I know if, if I was going to buy a house, and it's not the house, the, the person who has the chickens is going to suffer for it, it's the people on the next to them. Person that has the chickens can get rid of the chickens if somebody, if somebody says, "I'll buy you a house, but you get rid of the chickens," they'll buy you a house. But the two houses next to them are stuck with chickens there, so if they buy the house, so they won't buy the house. And you could ask 100 people, and I'm sure you would get a good percentage of them saying, "No, I don't want to live next to chickens," because if they have encephalitis, if one person gets encephalitis, the whole thing, to me, isn't worth it. So, that's, that's my feeling. If we decide that, you know, we went through this before, if we decide that as a council, that you, you want to go through the effort of putting, getting a permit, permission for these things to, to happen, I would very much recommend that we have review, let staff review the rules and regulations that other areas have. Brevard County has seven. Rockledge has 16. Orlando has 12. Palm Bay has 10. Vanneta Springs, wherever that is, has seven, and so on. Well, I'll go with it. DeBarry has 14. Sarasota has 10. Evidently, other areas have figured out that there are problems, and they don't want to get in the middle of them, and hopefully by putting rules on it, and I think one of those rules should be the size of the, of the property, that we, we put the, we give staff the ability or the direction to go and come back with suggestions as to what rules we should have.
I see more lights.
Okay. Let me just get myself straight in here. Vice Mayor?
Sir, I'll share with you, I think it might be helpful from public comment. It would be helpful for me.
Is it a hint?
And I'm saying for public comment, if there were cards on the issue.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I should promote cards, and I apologize. Number five, it's you.
Just be, can I add one thing before we take public comment? My daughter's best friend came down last week from Charleston, and Charleston does allow chickens in the backyard. You can buy a rundown house in Charleston that needs a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work for $700,000. So, what she told me when we were discussing it, because I told her, I said, "This is going to come up," and she said, "It sure has not changed the price of property up there. It just keeps going straight up." Chickens are no. So, for what it's worth, it doesn't seem to affect the, the price of property.
I saw something on television the other day about a home in California that was probably, would equate to one of the poorest homes that we have here, and it went for $2.5 million. Did you see that?
Yep.
So, the property value has a lot to do with location.
Yeah. Oh, and it has a lot to do with location, but she said the property price is up there, and they've allowed chickens for several years, and the property prices just keep going up.
Again, I would say that's probably unique to...
Charleston?
Property. No, the property is, is what's worth money. And if people want to go in there, I'm sure they buy the property, and if they want the chickens, they keep them. If they don't, they get rid of them. Anyone else have any comments up here? If not, we'll go to the cards. Clark, would you read the cards, please?
Beatrice Chamberlain?
Hi, my name is Beatrice Blanco Chamberlain. I know you've probably are sick of seeing me, but I wanted to thank the council for the time and effort that they put into research and pulling the information from 2013, and I also want to thank the citizens who have been waiting very patiently for this ordinance discussion to come up, because I know there's quite a few of you guys in the, you guys could raise your hands, all of you here who've been waiting very patiently this evening for this. I appreciate it. So, I provided a copy of Article 5, Division 1, Section 5-86 to the council, and I highlighted Item 4. I would bring to the attention of the council that this ordinance, the same one that bans the keeping of chickens in residential areas, permits for the keeping of an unspecified number of seamless banded homing pigeons for sporting and or exhibition purposes in any residential use district. As a citizen, it is contradictory in nature to allow an individual to keep an unspecified number of banded homing pigeons on their property, but not allow them to keep a specified number of hens. Pigeons carry many of the same diseases as hens, since they're also birds, they have similar noise levels, and will attract many of the same predators as chickens. So, if the council is truly worried about disease, noise levels, and property values, it is illogical to have an allowance for pigeons, since they should present many of the same concerns for you guys. Also, I wanted to bring up that a Chicken Care 101-type class would be, I think, very beneficial for anybody who is wanting to keep backyard chickens. As the easiest way to actually combat disease when it comes to any animal is practicing basic hygiene, such as regular hand washing. And I have actually been approached by a veterinarian here in Titusville. Her name is Dr. Brockleman, and she has offered to provide classes... As the easiest way to actually combat disease when it comes to any animal is practicing basic hygiene, such as regular hand washing. And I have actually been approached by a veterinarian here in Titusville, her name is Dr. Brockleman, and she has offered to provide classes free of charge every three to six months for those who are interested in keeping chickens. If you are concerned about zoonotic diseases, those are the diseases that can be passed directly from animals to humans, then it's best to worry mostly about cats and dogs, as they're the ones who carry the vast majority of them, including bartonolosis, rabies, bordatella, leptospirosis, and then, of course, that's not to mention the threat of bite wounds and the threat from fleas and ticks. And many people also share their beds and their pillows with cats and dogs, and they don't really have any concern for these diseases. So it, to me, does not make a whole lot of sense to be concerned about chickens on disease purposes when you probably have a cat that sleeps on your bed. So that's all I got. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter.
I have a question for you. How much land do you have?
A quarter acre.
Quarter acre?
I do.
Okay. Any other questions? I see those lights, thank you. Call the next card, please.
Marjorie Mansfield.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie Mansfield, and I'm a resident of Titusville. I'm here specifically to speak again for the acceptance of backyard chickens. I did present a packet to the council, I printed out, that I spent some time researching on. A lot of it touches on everything that Ms. Chamberlain has already spoken about, but again, kinda to back up the additional information to what she said, we have many animals already present in our home that we have no issue with, additionally speaking, I know the Ag Distinction Agent already spoke about it, but we have, in the state of Florida, no need for a permit for invasive, or non-native, not invasive, non-native species, turtles, amphibians. You have, you know, the snakes, which we have a very large issue with, and the Everglades, which are very invasive, but there's no, you don't have to take a class, you don't have to have a permit, as long as they're not venomous or on the endangered species list or threatened, it's not something that you have an issue with. So the fact that we're discussing the need to have a permit for four hens, which are technically domesticated animal, is interesting, and, you know, obviously up for debate. I mean, just things, animals that you can own in Florida that you don't require a permit, button quail, canaries, chinchillas, cockatiels, doves, ferrets, you know, your guinea pigs, your hedgehogs, moles, shrews, you can own squirrels in Florida without a permit. And my favorite that I found from the FWC website is you can actually own a toucan with no permit, which is definitely not a domesticated bird. So it's something that you can definitely look in, we've provided the information there in the packet. And again, basic hygiene is key with, as with any pet that you own. You need to clean up after the pet, you need to wash your hands after it. I mean, it's not, you know, rocket science, you must be a responsible pet owner when you have any animal, whether it's with children or just yourself. It's just basic knowledge pet ownership. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Just one comment, I agree with you, you have to be responsible. Unfortunately, not everybody is.
You're correct.
I'm not debating you.
I know.
Next card, please.
Lindsay DeShaker.
Hello, my name's Lindsay DeShetler, and I'm here to also say I'm for backyard chickens. And I do agree, I just wanna make some comments, and most of the questions were already answered, but with Mr. Diesel's situation where he sees chickens in his neighborhood, I don't understand why nobody's called animal control yet, because I agree, that's not acceptable, and you've been turning a blind eye on it, and I don't think that if we have backyard chickens, anybody should make excuses for the people that aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And the fact to say that, "Oh, I'm worried because everyone's gonna start breaking the rules, and we're gonna have to deal with this," well, we have animal enforcement in place for those situations, and that shouldn't be a reason to stop the good citizens from our right to have backyard chickens, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Stephen Marion.
Thank you. The arguments I hear against backyard chickens seem to address property values, noise pollution, smell, and health. I'm a licensed real estate broker in the state of Florida. I no longer practice in the industry, but when I did, I performed hundreds of broker price opinions and worked with hundreds of buyers, buyers and sellers. Never once did I run across a situation where it could be claimed that the existence of a chicken coop negatively affected the value of the property. I did, however, see tons of cases where dogs, and especially cats, did tremendous damage. Not once did I encounter a buyer that was disheartened by the presence of a coop, but I did have a number of buyers that were pleased by the presence of coops in good condition. Regarding noise, I can imagine people reporting noise pollution, for which there already are ordinances, for things like domestic disputes, loud stereos, loud vehicles, or barking dogs. I can only imagine the laugh on the other end of the line when someone calls to report a couple of noisy hens. Roosters maybe, but not hens. Regarding the smell, I have relatives in Iowa that raise chickens on their farms. I know the ammonia-like smell that hundreds of chickens can generate inside and a bit downwind of an ill-maintained coop. A few hens, though, just aren't capable of generating more than, anything more nauseous than the equivalent of a pile of dog poop, really. The last argument I hear is one regarding health. I was a bit surprised to learn that due to its resurgence, the CDC actually tracks the health concerns regarding backyard chickens. Last year, over 23,000 people in the United States died from bacterial infections. In all of those cases, there was just one in Mississippi that was associated with an infection from the improper handling of chickens, one in 23,000. Do you imagine that the CDC response was to suggest further regulation of the activity? No, the experts at the CDC basically said, "Hey, don't be an idiot, wash your hands after handling chickens." So if the experts at the CDC don't see it as a major health risk, the experts at the Florida Department of Health don't see it as a major health risk, Brevard County can interpret that data to regulate it in such a way as to not consider it a major health risk, then please tell me, why does Titusville imagine that they know more and know better than the CDC and the Florida Department of Health? I moved here last June with my wife and my daughter from Orlando. I still commute there as a senior-level software engineer. We specifically chose to buy a home in Titusville, not just because it is adjacent to some of the best beaches, fishing, and kayaking in the world, but because we wanted to escape the oversight of homeowners' associations in modern-day suburbia, the ones that tell you what color to paint your house, what color your drapery can be, if your grass is an eighth of an inch too tall, or your sidewalk or mailbox is too dirty. We bought an older home here to fix up that was not deed-restricted by an association, because we want more control over how we live our life. We want to experience the pride and self-respect that comes from self-sufficiency via horticulture and, in this case, raising chickens, something we mistakenly assumed was legal when we bought here, and we want our daughter to experience that same sort of pride and self-respect as well, something that Instagram and the likes of PewDiePie sadly don't afford kids these days. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I ever said it was a major health risk. It is a health risk, no, he said so. Next, please.
Jackson Holder.
I'm Jackson Holder, everybody calls me Jay. I was born and raised here. I'm 56, and I'm the homing pigeon guy from 1992, okay? When Truman Scarborough was sitting in your seat, Mayor Johnson, I showed up down here, and I've had homing pigeons since I was the age of 14. I'm the executive vice president of our national organization now, about 10,000 members strong. So I've done this before, but not on behalf of chickens, but homing pigeons. I've heard some great stuff come up. You're a fantastic asset for things like this. I mean, invaluable what this man's got to say. You're never gonna get a phone call from anybody that was attacked and bitten by a chicken. You're not gonna get that call. You're not gonna get a call that anybody was scratched, or mauled, or sent to the hospital because of an attack from a hen in the backyard. My family has some personal experience. I had 100 pigeons on a lot, 100 by 80 feet, 80 by 105, in Fox Lake Manor, for 17 years, not one complaint. I got the ordinance, came down and solicited the folks on the council to make sure I'd, in the event that I did, I had some protection. It was, I was being proactive, and that's what these people are trying to do. I mean, people are trying to move to a point that their children get to see a little animal husbandry, even though you're not gonna have chicks born, there's no roosters, but you can go down and buy these little bitty chicks and watch them grow up, and one day, they'll lay eggs for your family, and you can give them to your dad, and your mom, and your brothers and sisters and friends around town, because they'll, four hens will lay more than a family can eat unless you've got eight kids. It's pretty impressive what the people that keep animals and do it well, how well they take care of their beloved pets. You will always have people that'll go buy a dog, go buy a cat, won't keep it in, it'll run the neighborhood, people with chickens will do it, too. The city and the county has a machine in place to take care of those people. It's not going to be a huge additional cost. Now, when I get done, I gotta know, Mr. Johnson, are you gonna poo-poo on everything I've said? Because you haven't passed on an opportunity with any person that's spoken to make a comment.
Sir, I have a right to speak.
Sure you do. Sure you do, and I have a right to point out the fact that these folks are listening, and you're, because you're against it, you're just, it's unbelievable.
That's my right.
I voted for you, boss.
Well, thanks.
I voted for you. But, hey, you know, I'm learning a lot. This is my first time in here.
Sir, I have not given up my right because I was elected, sir.
Yeah, knock yourself out. But y'all, y'all see it, I see it. But I haven't been in here since the ordinance of 92, and this is great, it hasn't changed much. I haven't been in this council chamber, so I've been in a lot of them. But, folks, this is a, this is a small nothing thing. It really is. It's great for families. I've got personal experience with grandchildren that have had great joy from their hens, but they have to fly under the radar, because there's a real good chance that somebody will come along and take it all away from them someday. So these folks are being proactive, and I agree with them. Thank you.
Next card, please.
The last card is Scott Moore.
Good evening. Thank you all for your dedication in this long night. I just came up to address, first of all, the point that was made about education of children and the things you can learn. When I was a kid, my dad and I built what's called a chicken tractor, and I'm sure, you know, and it's designed to be pulled around whatever area, and this is a cleanliness thing. So you leave your chickens there for, what, a week or something, maybe four or five days, one day? Oh, and they move it? Okay. It's been a long time, I'm almost 50 years old here. Anyway, and we had about a dozen chickens in a 12 by 12 with, my dad and I built nesting boxes behind, and went out every morning and collected fresh eggs, and my mom would cook them up. That was a huge learning experience. We did buy the little chicks and then watched them, watched them grow up, and then enjoyed their, the food source. We just never, we never butchered any of them, we just used them as an egg source. The other thing I want to address, considering the fact that they're a food source, and how Mr. Broome probably knows the reference I'm gonna make, from a legal standpoint, is back in the day, the licensing to fish was very, very strict. Even if you wanted to fish off of the shore, you had to pay for a saltwater fishing license or a freshwater fishing license. And some group, I'm not sure what group it was, took it to, I don't even know if they went to the Supreme Court, but they took it pretty high up in the courts, and the court ruled that you can't make it illegal to provide a food source for yourself, for your family. And the same law has been applied to different agricultural crops as well. And the third and last thing I'll bring up is the money issues we've been talking about all night with the healthcare and everything, is the permitting fee and the permitting, maybe, maybe some money could go into, you know, the educational process and teaching the parents and the children and whoever wants to have, have their, have these chickens. Then they get the education, the city collects their money, and everybody's happy, hopefully. And then for the 25, or whatever, what'd you say the cost was on the, on the class?
I didn't say it.
Oh, okay. Whatever the money is, I mean, I probably eat $25 worth of eggs every month, so. And that was the third thing, is the income, income stream, and the food source. Am I correct on the food source case? Okay, no, it's been a long time. It's been a long time. Anyway.
Scott, don't go away. Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Please.
Thank you. How long, do you know how long a chicken lays eggs?
You know what, it's been a long time, I don't.
Until they die.
That's not true.
But it, and I'm not trying to sidestep your question, it depends, depends on the breed of the bird. Some of these birds, and I've got some at the house that are 10 years old, they're still laying. They'll lay shorter periods of time, they'll larger, lay a larger egg, they have a poorer shell quality, but they'll continue to lay. You have other birds that are what I call foo-foo birds, some of the birds that are like the Bantams or they're show-type birds, that are very pretty to look at, but they're not bred for production. Those birds will lay a very small number of eggs per year. You get to, like, white leggins that have been bred for production, they'll weigh up to 300 eggs a year and do it for a number of years. Now, they'll go through periods that they quit, you know, when they go through a mold, they lose their feathers, they build new feathers, and then they start over again.
What happens when they stop laying eggs?
You heard of chicken soup? Now, I don't know what this ordinance is.
Most of these-
Some of these ordinances are written where you're not allowed to-
To butcher them.
To butcher a bird. So, I mean, you ask a realistic question, I have to answer it that way, from a farmer's point of view. We use everything.
I get it, sir, but most places that, and I've done research on this myself, and I have all the research that was last week, last year, rather, and they said on average about two years. And they also mentioned a place called the Minneapolis Chicken Rescue Run that in 2012, when I guess they really didn't have a, an ordinance on it, they had, let me see, what was it? They had six calls, no, they had six calls before that. In 2012, a few years later, they had 500 calls for chickens that nobody wanted anymore. I don't know whether that'll be a problem here, but it was a problem there.
Well, there's a lot of things that can be done. There's a place, there's actually one, two, at least two places in Orlando that will buy them and process them. A fellow by the name of Ali, Ali Meats, will actually purchase the birds and process them. That's another option.
Thank you.
Very briefly, in summation, address one more point that was brought up by several people. However, I never remember handling, if ever. We didn't treat these birds like pets, I mean, we fed them and, you know, collected their eggs, but we never reached in the pen and, you know, "Hey, chickens aren't for that. That's what your cats for, or your dogs for." Anyway, in summation, that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you.
That was a joke.
Next card, please.
We have no more cards.
Okay. As I said, if we decide to pursue this and give staff the instructions to create an ordinance, I would also like them to have the ability to come back with recommendation as to what rules, because it's obvious that most places have rules. Okay, number, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, and for council to follow, on page five of six in the packet, or it has a summary of findings for a chart, and it gives a synopsis, so it's a chart that shows different ordinances by different cities and what they do, what they don't allow, and I think that's a good framework if we wanna take a look at this and applying it. My suggestion is this, is that the guidelines that Sarasota has, I like those, and so it gives you four, it gives you up to four chickens. It's a, they can't be in your front yard. It's a 10-foot setback, I believe is what I'm saying, excuse me, a 25-foot setback. So these are things that are in line with most of your homes already, so there's nothing that's odd about that. The roosters are prohibited, slaughter is not allowed, and then the chicken house is, it says four square feet, I like the four- I like the four-by-four square feet. I think that that's a...at a minimum, I think that's...because I heard two, right? So it's two at a...two square feet for a minimum. So a four-by-four gives you four birds at a minimum that you would have to have. And I don't...I don't think we need fees on this. I don't think that we need permitting on this. I don't get a permit to go get a dog.
Yes, you do.
Excuse me. Let me rephrase that correctly. Yes, sir. Thank you for that.[976.86][976.86](LAUGHTER).
Maybe we shouldn't ask.
Let me rephrase that. Sometimes council gets you. Well, let me rephrase that. So I don't think that we need a permit for a chicken. And I would agree that if, for some reason, a structure goes above that 120-square-foot threshold, that somebody needs to come see the building department on that. I would agree with that. But I don't need fees, and relative to enforcement, I think that whatever understanding or obligations or...that we already have with Brevard County Animal Control, from enforcement's standpoint, that that enforcement would stand within the city, that we wouldn't have a conflicting ordinance that would lessen their authority or ability to enforce what they...I don't want something in conflict, although if we enhance some of the restriction, I'm okay with that. And that's where I sit on it.
I would like to leave it up to staff to bring those back to us, not limit them as to what they could bring, and then we can, at that meeting, determine what we agree on as a group, as a council. Is that okay with you?
And I'm...but let me rephrase that. I'm definitely...I would be happy to bring back and review what staff would present. From what's inside of here, I don't think we're going to find much different in staff reporting regarding the nuts and bolts of an ordinance.
I appreciate what you're saying, but let's let them come back with what they think is good for Titusville, and then we can make a decision as a council, the majority making the decision.
Sure.
And that's okay, that you told them what you feel, but we'd all have to tell them that we feel now, and I don't think we should do it now.
Okay.[1094.15][1094.15](LAUGHTER).
Anything else? Any other questions? Whoops, I see lots of things up here. Number three, Sarah Stuckel.
Yep. I actually just wanted to somewhat mimic what Vice Mayor said. A lot of those things seem consistent. I would add on the safety class, just to...if we're not going to have fees, just to show that people are serious about this. They're not like, "Oh, we can have chickens now. Let me just go get one," and think they're okay. I did have a little bit of reservations. I wanted to do some research when I first heard about it. We just got back, a few of us just got back from a conference, actually, where we were able to meet with other people, elected officials across the state, and this was actually brought up. And I think we're...you know, we want to make sure we make good decisions, but from everyone I talked to, it...one city, they implemented a program, they've had six applications. Another city has a pilot program going on. I did not hear any negative feedback once this was implemented. So I feel very confident that I think we'll be okay implementing something, approving to have staff look into this. Worst-case scenario, I think we should all keep in mind, if this becomes an issue, we could always put it right back in the code. So I think this is a good idea moving forward.
Anything else? Member Nelson?
I like the different provisions that are in some of the other codes, but I do think that it should be up to staff to bring it back to us, to say, "This is what we think is going to work in our city." I read through all of the other ordinances. Everybody has something good in it. Some of them, I sort of went, "Hmm," but I did like the permitting fee, only because it provides that the people are doing the class, so we know they have the education they need to raise these animals, and we know that where they're keeping the animals is a good spot. So that was the only thing that I would disagree with Mr. Barron Jerron, is that seemed to be a good provision in there.
Thank you. Member Diesel?
I'll kind of reiterate what I previously said. I think that the people who have chickens, or who shouldn't have chickens yet, if you do, don't tell us, but those who will have chickens, those who are like you, will be just fine. I think we're moving forward in that direction. What we are all concerned about are those that aren't you. And, you know, and I've heard it said several times, not everybody is like the Speaker or et cetera. But to be fair about it, certainly, we...you know, I speak of the chickens. I don't really speak about them to think, "Oh, my gosh, they're all over the place." I speak about them because they're already out there. People already have chickens. So why don't we kind of put an ordinance out there to kind of control it and have some rules that we don't really have right now, because we don't have an ordinance? So I think that benefits everybody. If you're for chickens, it benefits you. If you don't want chickens, well, you've got some ordinances that you can deal with. I think we're moving forward, and in all fairness, and I think it's kind of been said, but it needs to be said, I'll probably see a dog or two running around on the way home, too.[1298.83][1298.83](LAUGHTER). You know, so I don't want to, you know, just say, "The chickens." We just happen to be talking about chickens. So I think we're moving forward. I think that certainly, Ms. Musaka, your group will do a fine job of sorting out the different ordinances that we've seen. I've seen some good ones. Again, I don't think we're going to have a rush of people running out to buy chickens that aren't interested in them. So I think we're moving forward in the right direction.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to accept the advisability to develop an ordinance, amending Section 5-86 of the Code of Ordinances, allowing chickens in the backyard.
Second.
And did you want to conclude what you said before about bringing the recommendations to us from staff?
I would like to have the recommendations from staff. When they bring in the ordinance, I'm assuming they're going to put in the provisions that they believe are needed.
Mayor, before we vote, I'd like to acknowledge Joe. Thank you for coming tonight. You've provided...[1363.58][1363.58](APPLAUSE). You provided very valuable information that we, as staff, just wouldn't have had the opportunity to provide to this council, so we really do appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir.
My pleasure, and the...we are available at the Agriculture Extension Service to put on any of these classes that you might want, and we would, of course, tailor them to whatever your ordinance is. So as we put them on, if we're going to put one...do one here in the city of Titusville, we would want to have it where those ordinances are what we were able to talk to. And I just did that last week in the city of St. Cloud the same way, which, by the way, the city of St. Cloud just wrote a new ordinance, and I think from what I heard you talk about tonight, that'd be a good one to look at because it addressed all those points.
Sure.
So...and for those of you who don't know, the city of Cocoa has just adopted an ordinance also.
Okay. Have a motion, and I have a second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favors, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Next up, let's see where we are here.
Petitions and requests.
Oh, yes, there it is. Petitions and requests. Does anybody have anything they would like to speak about except chickens? I see no one coming forward. I guess there isn't. After that, mayor and council reports. You have my report, written report. Does any member of council want to make a report of any kind?
I do.
Yes, Sarah. You're first. You got your number.
Oh, the only thing that I was going to say is, we went down to listen to the launch manager from Blue Origin today, Scott Henderson. It is amazing what's coming. Yeah. It was well worth going down and driving to Melbourne to listen.
That's great. Member Diesel?
Kind of a public service announcement, if you will. I proudly want to announce that Mrs. Nita Jones is the new principal at Titusville High School, and she's an alumni of Titusville High School, is now the principal of Jackson Middle School. And I worked with her, and I'm very close as far as that goes, and I just want to congratulate her. I'm excited to have an alumni of Titusville High School coming back to be the principal there, and I know she is very excited. She's actually, well, certainly before now, was appointed at the school board meeting tonight. So, Nita Jones, congratulations, principal Titusville High School.
Very good.[1548.74][1548.74](APPLAUSE). City managers, report.
Yes, sir. I have two action items. First off is to have council approve the budget workshop and public hearing dates as published. The dates are 16 August at 3:00 PM City Hall. First public hearing is 6 September at 5:30 City Hall. Second public hearing is 14 September at 5:30 in the City Hall.
Anybody have any issues with that?
Sorry. I just had a question. Is there any way to have the workshop at 3:00 PM later in the day, or...
Yes, ma'am. We can slide it. You bet.
If that's okay with everyone else. It would...
Which workshop?
Yeah.
That would be the first budget workshop.
On August 16th.
You want to move it to 4 or 5, or...
I don't think you want to go too...I don't think you want to get too late.
Yeah, how long do they normally last in your opinion?
This is a good two to three hours.
Oh, wow. Yeah, if possible, maybe 5 o'clock, if everyone else is okay with that.
Yes. All right.
Okay, so we'll adjust the budget workshop on 16 August to 5:00 PM and leave the other two upon your approval.
Sir, I guess the one question I have is, and for council as well, any potential of moving it to Saturday?
Sir, these dates are set based on the other...the county and other municip...or the school boards that are meeting before us, and we have to have that data and fall within a parameter of a certain number of days behind each one of those.
And the rationale is just for civic engagement, I was on.
Yeah, and that's kind of where...I mean, it would help for me, because I work during the day to get there, but also I'm hopeful if other people work during the day that they could maybe come to it as well when they get off work.
Anything else, sir?
Yes. Second, the 11 April 2017 council meeting, Greater Titusville Renaissance, requested a grant of $4,000, the city funding to support road closure and public safety support for the Sea Turtle Festival, which is scheduled for 10 June 2017. Staff has directed to verify funding was available or not, and if so, from what accounts the funding grant source would be sourced. Staff has researched the existing special events funding, has determined that $4,000 can be sourced by reallocating funding from the following existing special events, and the budget amendment is not required. The Arts and Algorithm, residual funds of $130, and the Titusville 150th Anniversary, residual funds of $3,870. That equals $4,000. Staff is requesting council's direction on regarding the support of the grant of the Sea Turtle Festival.
Anybody want to comment? Anybody have a problem with that?
The motion.
Just majority of you are good.
That's fine.
Consensus, okay.
Is anybody okay with that? Everybody's okay with it.
Okay. And last, there's some upcoming dates for you, and as you know, we have one council meeting in June. The second meeting will be canceled, so that will be the 27th of June to allow council summer recess. Subject to your questions is complete, Mayor. Portion.
Anything else for the city manager? See, no, that was from the city attorney. Nothing from the city attorney. We have completed our mission. I declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.